Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen's Meeting of Tuesday, October 22, 2024. If we can all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just for the record, Ms. Wellman will be late. So first item on the agenda for six o'clock is a working session, water distribution discussion. Mr. Montori, were you able to put some type of policy together? Mr. Hardeman, if you could join us, please, and state your name for the record.
Mr. Chair, Kevin Hardeman, Public Works Director.
We do have a draft policy that we came up with. If you want to go through the infrastructure items first, and I'll make copies for the board.
Okay.
You've got to print them out and make copies. Do you want to hand it over, James?
I'm going to hand it over to James.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as we've had a number of discussions around water, this is that working session that I was glad we were able to get scheduled. So I just threw together a kind of primer for us to get the discussion set. So situation, Tuxbury's aging water infrastructure faces significant challenges resulting in a total of 216 incidents, including 141 water main breaks since 2020. Breaks require substantial resources with 95 incidents necessitating overtime and/or police details, resulting in severe dissatisfaction among residents. Nearly half of the 160 miles of water conduit network has already surpassed its expected lifespan, leading to frequent breaks and disruptions, which places a burden on both residents and town resources. Historically, the town replaced just one mile of water main per year. Following our 2023 working session, we committed to accelerating that pace to three miles a year. Despite this increase, replacing the existing end-of-life infrastructure alone will take over 20 years, and an additional 10 years to replace the, address the pipes that are going to go out of end-of-life during that 20-year window. Without a comprehensive plan, Tuxbury risks continuing to face increased emergency repair costs, service disruptions, and public dissatisfaction. The town must move forward with a structured and transparent approach, engaging the community to build trust and ensure accountability throughout the process by prioritizing critical repairs, securing funding, and setting realistic timelines. Tuxbury can begin by addressing its water infrastructure challenges in a way that balances long-term sustainability with immediate needs. So that comes as no shock to anyone up here.
No, it does not.
Proposal. So again, this is my individual proposal to get the discussion started. So given Tuxbury's critical need to address aging water infrastructure, developing a long-term plan is essential. As a member of the board, I'm proposing that we create a comprehensive, community-backed plan that's going to do four things. One, provide a 10-year roadmap to resolve the town's water infrastructure issues, ensuring service quality and reliability. 10 years so we can actually have, you know, a realistic timeline on resolving this. I think that brings us up to about seven miles a year. I don't know how this keeps cutting out. And you'll notice I say "service quality and reliability." I'm sure we've all gotten the calls, and we've had Mr. Hardeman here a number of times talking about, you know, is the water safe? Is the water clean? Yes, that is not, that is not up for discussion. We know that the water, we have good quality water. It is the quality of the conduit that is of issue. Item two is informing the community throughout the process, creating transparency, and allowing residents to hold the board accountable for achieving the outlined goals. So instead of a nebulous plan where we go, yeah, we're going to increase X amount of miles a year, working with Mr. Hardeman and Mr. Montori and his soon-to-be successor on an actual outlined plan that we can communicate out, not only to residents, but as to support our funding sources, whether we're going to the state or fed, wherever we need to go to, having something that is material will help that case. Define the scope, define and scope the problem clearly, which is crucial to understanding the extent of the challenges and identifying effective solutions. So we know what pipe gives us issues. Mr. Hardeman's done a great job of putting together a heat map of where the breaks are so we know where our problem areas are. It's really just going to come down to funding and making sure that Mr. Hardeman has the resources he needs to be able to achieve this successfully. And then fourth, last but not least, explore funding options to limit the impact on water rates. I'm sure we can all agree that jamming a large project like this on the water rates is not going to be successful, so we need to look at other options, see potentially grants that are out there, looking at how we can potentially put some of it on the tax levy, whatever creative ideas we can come up with that reduces the financial burden on residents while achieving the infrastructure goals. And then considerations, just based on, these are some highlights based on my discussions with the town manager and Mr. Hardeman. So financial, my estimated, so this is not coming from Mr. Hardeman or Mr. Montori, but my understanding is we're going to be looking at about $2 million per mile for replacement. That's an all-in cost. Inflations will continue to impact the cost of labor and materials, and if we're looking at a 10-year plan or the existing 20-plus that we have on the books right now, that's going to be problematic. And then rough estimate of approximately 200 million over 10 years. So not cheap. Community disruption, walking through kind of what this might look like. A large concern is going to be increasing from three miles to 7.7 miles a year. We're going to have increased road closures, detours, service disruptions, et cetera, which is going to be quite the burden for Mr. Hardeman, his staff, to work through, and why I think it's important for us to have a plan that we can market out to residents. If we can communicate something clearly, I think that's going to go a long way in kind of assuaging those fears. And then accountability, when we're taking on a project of this scope, this isn't building a building. It's not building a new school. It's not, we don't want it to be the sewer project and run into the issues we ran into with that. So making sure that we are being transparent, that we're communicating, and we have something that the community can hold us to, I think will be important. And then resourcing, again, I will let Ms. Hardeman speak for herself, but my understanding from discussions is we're probably going to need some additional personnel staff to take on this amount of work. Probably, if I had to guess, a project manager and one to two personnel actually on the road crew for water sewer. So that is the kind of starting point I wanted to propose, get the conversation going. Again, my, my ask is those four bullet points, we look at, hopefully, a 10-year program to resolve this, and we make sure that it's obviously financially feasible, which I know we're all going to be concerned with, but it's also something that we can let the community hold us to, and we can use it as marketing material for the life of the program. So I'll turn it back over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. That was a concise presentation. I'm going to turn it over to the board, Mr. Kratman.
Thank you. No, I appreciate, James, for putting this together. It's, we need more information out there to the residents. Nothing that, honestly, not at this table, we don't know, that is what we've been going through. I understand that, you know, the current pace would probably 20 years plus to go into it. Problem is, is that the financial circumstances we're in. So, I mean, unless there's some grants that we haven't, we've talked about this, trying to get grants, trying to get things to the state, trying to get things to the feds, and we've come up, we haven't been very successful. So to put it in 10 years, the only way we're going to do that is raise taxes. And I don't know if there's an appetite for that, to be able to do that at this time. I mean, we have, we just spent a lot of money in the community, and we have more expenses that are going to be coming in the near future, and, you know, we did, I, I would love to get all the water lines. I'm not trying to be negative, I'm not trying to be any way, but then if there was a way for, I mean, if anybody here at this table, anybody in the audience, anybody in this community has a way that we can get some money to do this, I'll gladly listen to you. But I just don't know, like I said, if we're going to put a 10-year plan together and hold us to that standards, that means we need to get funds for it. So where are we going to get that funding from? That's my concern. It's like, I can't imagine going to the residents and saying, you're paying twice as much than any other community around right now. I understand over the long run and the, and the cost it's costing us for the things, but, you know, year after year after year, I've sat here with Richard and, you know, and we've talked to you guys, you know, Kevin, about, you know, doing these type of things, and we've, you know, we've talked about disruption to roadways, and could we even do, you know, that we wanted to do 10 miles a year? Could we handle that? You know, if, if the money came forward. I know we did Whipple, so we got 7 million or 8 million, and we put it all to that, and we, we made it work. So it can happen, but that's also another thing of, you know, trying to find out how, you know, we need a plan. I appreciate that part. My, my thing is, I just don't know where we're getting the money to do it. But thank you.
Mr. Reiter.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mackey, for putting this together. I'm very familiar with this, understanding there's not enough money to, you know, repair or replace our infrastructure. $20 million a year is a really big ask. I don't know, honestly, it threw you to the chair, to Mr. Montori, I don't believe because we are an enterprise account, we can put it on the tax levy?
Well, right now, we're a fully, we're a fully funded enterprise fund. We are, all of cost for water are on the rates. A few years back, we did shift some of the debt to the tax levy, but then we shifted it back when rates were not increasing at a higher, higher rate. So you can, you can supplement with the tax levy, but we don't have the capacity within the tax levy to do it without an override, some sort of excluding the debt.
Right. So, I mean, that, you know, rough idea, you know, $20 million on the, the rates, what are we looking at? Probably 30, 30%?
Yes.
I did a rough calculation back in Africa, it was about 31%.
So we're looking at, if you, if we continue to borrow water debt at 10 years, which is what we do, we like to get the debt off the books and pay less in interest, you're looking at first-year increase of about 30%, second-year increase of another 25%, then 15, 16, 12, 10, you know, and onward. If you extended the debt to 15 years, which, again, is not something we've done, you know, the percentage drops by, say, 5% of an increase. And then if you went to 20 years, which I wouldn't recommend, but places do do that, it drops another 5. So that's what you're looking at.
You know, it, you know, I've gone through this, trying to explore grants. Right now, main replacement is not in their priority, you know. State revolving fund is, right now, it's treatment, PFAS, or, or it will be the next short chain of PFAS after the UCMR 5 comes out, any of the, that's following that. Sewer is nutrient-based, so, and I've tried putting projects through just for infrastructure, pump stations, and so forth, and they're not scoring high enough in, in the intended use plan to put you above that threshold. So ultimately, this would be put on the rates. And I'll echo Mr. Kratman, you know, in light of the economy, I just, you know, I'd love, I'd love a plan, you know, a plan would be great, but I just, you know, a 30% water increase, or even a 20% water increase in a 7% tax increase, or an override, I just, I can't support that right now. Putting the plan together doesn't cost us much. You know, and a couple, a couple other points you, you brought up, James, is staffing, you know, doing an additional $20 million, I think you're going to need more than one project manager. You probably need, you know, when you, when you're doing a project, you probably have one project manager handling, maybe two. You may need three, four, if you're going to do it properly and, and make sure you're getting all your information you needed. And I think to do that amount of work in a 20-years, you know, 20 miles or 10 miles, 7.7, you're looking at, you're talking one to two years of a plan. You know, this isn't something you can just put out tomorrow. This is something you're going to need a couple of years to really put this out, and I think I'm for the plan, but I think we really need to sit back and, and look at that. How would you manage doing that? Because that's a lot of work. You know what I mean? Whipple was a lot of work, and that was a $7 million project. So again, James, great job with it. I think residents are aware of, we need to do it. I just, I don't think the economy right now, but having the plan, if, if things change in, you know, one, two, three years down the road.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Yeah, no, so first, this isn't like something I want to do or enjoy doing, right? Nobody wants to spend this kind of money. It's just, I think we've all agreed, we've all said multiple meetings, this is one of the largest pain points for the town of Tuxbury. And again, those, that 20 million a year is my non-expert estimate. I wanted to get some fuzzy math on paper so we could have a starting point to discuss. But I agree, it is going to take years to get this plan together. And I'll say what I said in our last working session, I don't want to kick the can, I don't want my kids dealing with this same issue 30 years from now in Tuxbury and having water main breaks and still trying to figure it out. So I think, yes, if we can get some kind of support behind getting a plan together, we can then have a more informed discussion around what it would cost, how long it would take, what we can do. But I think that we need to, we need to do something, we need to take some kind of action and, and get this ball rolling.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. I like having the plan. It's the financing. Again, I'm going to reiterate what Mr., what all three have said. I think the first part of this plan, we have to investigate how we're going to pay for it. You know, rates going up 30% or 25%, even 10% is not going to go over well, it's not going to bode well. So I think we have to investigate, as Mr. Kratman said, grants, federal funding, they might not be out, much out there now, but if you remember a few weeks ago when a gentleman was here about the Trahan School, and he, he said, you just got to keep going after it and see what you can find, you know? You throw a rocket at them, and throw another one at them, and then just go back and get a bigger rocket till you can get some results. But I think that's going to be the major issue for us as a board, is how we're going to pay for it. Mr. Montori, a question for you, on the sewer end of it, I'm just thinking out loud here, on the sewer, when does that come off the tax levy?
Sewer?
Yes.
I'll tell you in a second. Still has a few more years to go.
But don't rates drop dramatically?
Yeah, it starts to drop. I'm going to pull up the rate.
It started dropping like three years ago.
Yeah, it did start dropping, but it does take a big drop in the next couple of years. So for sewer, the debt right now in FY '25 is $7,960,000. Half of that is on the tax levy. It drops to 6.6 in '26, then 6.5, 4.8, then it drops to 3, then it drops to 1.7, so 2030.
2030, so that's still a few years out, and if you, five years, it's at, that's 35 miles.
Yep.
And that's why I was thinking out loud of subsidizing, not subsidizing with it, but at least it's more palatable in the rates, you know, because you've come off your, your tax bill. And as Mr. Reiter said, you would need more help. Do we do our, our own installation of the lines, or is everything jobbed out?
Everything's contracted.
Everything's contracted out. So Mr. Montori, currently, what is the cost per mile? Is it the 2 million, or is it?
It's, you know, we originally were going with 1.8, but based on the most recent biz, I think we're bumping that up to about 2.2.
Yes. The last contract we did was about 2.2 per mile.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair, is that, is that full design, bidding, you know, from design to installation?
And Mr. Hardeman might ask you, what is the, the cost of the water breaks James mentioned in his thing? I mean, how many water breaks were there? 141?
141. I don't have an overall cost of what that entails. I can get those numbers.
Okay, that would be interesting to know, because if we had to pay for it anyways. Okay, I think I'm good for now, but again, I still think that the first item we have to tackle is the financing, how we're going to pay for it. And again, I think if we keep throwing stuff at the states, keep throwing stuff at the federal governments to see if we can come up with something in, in regards to grants or low-interest loans, some type of funding. Yeah. Ms. Wellman, you will?
Sorry.
Okay.
I was going to say, that's to that point of having the plan put together, similar to how we do our tip projects. If we have something on the shelf ready to go, it's marketable, we can then, you know, push our local legislators and federal legislators and try to get a little more support for it. Can't say how successful we'll be, but it gives us something to market. So that's, that's why the plan, I think, is step one. How we finance that plan is obviously a very important discussion, and it's probably not on the cards for the next couple of years, but we want to keep moving that ball forward, at least get that marketable plan that we can push out.
Well, in the long run, if we can get some grants and some federal funding, and the tax payers are still going to have to put some money towards it too, there is no ifs, ands, or buts about that.
Absolutely.
Ms. Wellman, you weren't here for the presentation, but if you would like to say a few syllables?
I will say just a few syllables. I apologize, I had a work commitment that I could not leave early enough for to attend your presentation, but, Mr. Hardeman, if you wouldn't mind sending me your information offline, that would be great, so I can review it and we can talk tomorrow, so I can speak intelligently to what you proposed to the board.
This is James.
Oh, I didn't, then your presentation, you send it to me. That'd be great. Never mind, Mr. Hardeman, you're off the hook for now. Now, I appreciate you being here and, and doing this work. I know that this board has prioritized water, and we've certainly heard the frustrations of the communities, so I, I will wait to get Mr. Mackey's presentation. I think that the notion of finding federal earmarks or grants certainly is appealing, but not really realistic to fund at this, at the level that I imagine we would need to be doing that at. And I think in, going forward, the MBTA community's acceptance will probably be a big part of eligibility for some of those things. We're seeing that on all kinds of new grants that we're, we're getting that weren't entailed before, as I'm sure you've seen. So it's, it's not a unique problem in Tuxbury, having water main breaks and so forth, it's not unique to Tuxbury, it's common all over, any municipality that has had public water for a while. So, yeah, I don't think there's going to be magic money out there, this is going to be a problem we're going to have to work at day in and day out over time. And I do want to commend your staff for coming in in the middle of the night, coming in when it's cold, coming in outside of their hours. I know they're paid for that, but it's not easy to get people in to restore water service at really inconvenient times, and the residents are appreciative of that in spite of the frustration, so I thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, one other thing to Mr. Hardeman. As part of the plan, could you look at, I mean, probably, you know, 20 to 25% of the project is design. Can you look, put together as part of that plan, bringing an in-house designer onboard? Bring in-house engineer, specific sole role, not pulled off for, you know, oh, we need it because the parks needs this, or we need it for this, specifically for water design. Put together that potential, put together proposed cost for any borings that need to be done, anything that ultimately is outsourced as part of the design process that you could shave 20 to 25% off that, you know, $2.2 million a year. And those that are not aware, any federal funds or any state funds, they may come up quick. But you have to have a project 50% design, 75% design, and if we could get two or three high-priority projects designed in the queue on the shelf that we could pull, and then also too, looking at some of the smaller streets, looking at doing in-house. I mean, we have some qualified individuals, if we have to design, you know, I understand that different jobs maybe, or projects might be pushed off, but if we could get in the, you know, the dead-end street or the cul-de-sac that needs a six-inch main or an eight-inch main, be able to put town forces at that, you know, you're, you're cutting your costs down to, you know, we're already paying labor costs, so, and we have the equipment. It's just a matter of coming up with the plan and something as part of the long-term plan. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other quick question. I know, Kevin, we talked about, you know, at one point a couple of years ago, we were talking about the type of materials, type of pipes we're going to put in there. And at the time, we said we were going to go to that because we thought it was cheaper and more, more availability to get. Now we're being told that it's cost the same. So what are we doing? Is it, are we using the, the different materials when we're doing these type of things? And are we paying the same cost? Are we, like, that's something, and after you answer that question, the next one I have is, are any of these pipes, could they possibly be lined? Like, is there any way that, I know that's happened in the past, I know these are really old pipes, but is there a section that maybe, you know, could, like you said, like you mentioned, a small street or something like that? Is there something that's a straightaway that maybe we could get in there, line that out and to do something like that? I'm not sure if it would work, this is pretty old, but, you know, it's worth asking if that's a possibility.
Great questions. So the lining process is something that you can do for steel pipe, iron pipe, we're talking about asbestos in that.
Yep.
You go to try to line that pipe, it's going to blow itself apart.
Yep.
That's not an option for the, the AC pipe.
Yep.
You know, the, the other lining, the cure-to-place linings and things like that, the challenge with those is at every service connection, every valve, you've got to get in and either dig down and replace that fitting, or you've got to somehow omit those sections, and it just makes it a challenging, you know, challenging installation, challenging process to use with a system like ours where we're not considered really an urban environment, but compared to other parts of the country where relatively urban, a lot of service connections and fittings per mile, things like that. So unfortunately, lining isn't something that we would see a benefit from.
I didn't think it would be something, I just wanted to ask, okay? People have brought it to my attention, that's all. I just wanted to get your answer out on that.
And it's something that we constantly keep in mind, to see if new technologies come out. As far as the pipe material goes, when COVID hit, we were seeing a significant shortage on ducted line and pipe, which is the preferred pipe to use. So we changed over to C909, a PVC pipe, which got us through a couple of projects. I wasn't 100% sold that that was where we needed to go, but I didn't feel that it was a good thing to do, to stop putting pipe in the ground and replace pipe for two years while we waited for ducted line to be available. We've since gone back to using ducted line pipe because it's, in my opinion, is a better product. Yes, it costs more per linear foot of pipe purchase cost than plastic, but what you see when you install water main is the material cost is minor compared to the excavation cost, the labor cost, the paving cost, the fittings, things like that. So, you know, while the, the pipe, you could argue, costs half as much to purchase, you may, you don't see a 50% savings on a project, you may see 5% to 7%, maybe 8% cost savings on a project to use the plastic. And again, I still don't think that that is a superior product to the ductal.
I know it's used in other parts of the country, but this is New England. And we've seen Rose Heave, and when we talked about it, we were willing to give it a shot to try some sections, because, you know, they say it works, but, you know, when you're going to, you're going to put it in the roadway, and I can imagine how happy the residents would be that we replaced the water line and then it burst the next year because it just wasn't the right materials to put out there. That's not something we want to do. But, you know, while we're using these materials, and the reason I'm asking these things, it's like, I know there was problems getting it, so, you know, beloved. So, you know, beloved, I, James is absolutely right. I agree with him 100%. We need a plan in place, and it's much in the same way of any construction project. We should have a plan on the table when funds become available, much like a design that we would send to MCOT. You know, if we have an intersection, we should have one on the table, ready to go, because all of a sudden money gets, some community falls behind, we're next on the tip, and we get it. We've seen it happen on our roadway projects, same way it could come forward with these water line projects. I don't see anytime soon they're going to be throwing money at us, but it never hurts to ask. And I did see something in, like, a story in the federal government, it was in the paper a couple of days ago, talking about it's mandatory to remove asbestos-lined pipes, and they got a, there's no money associated with it, it was just a story. I was reading it, hoping that I'd hear something that the feds are going to throw something at us because they want these things replaced, and of course, there wasn't. But, like I said, we should have a plan in place. I love, you know, your idea of having an inside engineer, to have somebody on the payroll to start designing. On the long run, we'll have, we'll have our roadways mapped out of what we need, we'll have someone dedicated to be looking at that, and then while we're doing it and these water main breaks happen, and you have to get to these locations as it's happening, we'll have, like, the plans, the layers of everything that's in store. So if you're going to go out there and you have to replace a small section, if you're replacing a small section, maybe we find out one we're digging out there that, instead of doing just replacing that water break, maybe we go a little bit further. While we're out there replacing something, do it in-house, like you said, and maybe go to the end of the street and replace the end of that. You're going to dig a hole anyway to fix it, and most likely, if you fix it, it's going to break five feet down the road anyway, because that's what tends to happen. So maybe we do have some in-house people working on it and try to replace sections and just, much in the same way we put in sections of sidewalks, just keep building on it, building on it, building on it, so we get it all done. I'd love to see us get, you know, $200 million handed over to us, to be able, because that's what we really need. But we have other costs. We've, we built schools, we've built buildings, and I know people are going to be coming to us again, looking for these things. So if this was the only cost, I've said this many times, we've sat at this table and we've had that conversation, this is the last big project. The last big project never happens. There's always another project, and there's always going to be another building, there's always going to be another, something that's going to come forward to us. This is the priority. These water lines need to get done, and we need to take it seriously, and we need to, that's what the residents are struggling with, and if you talk to anybody out there, it used to be sidewalks, it used to be things, this is the number-one conversation in town. The water lines, water breaks, they're sick and tired of them, brown water, you know, and so I applaud you for putting your work together, because we do need a plan, but like I said, we need to, we need to keep our eye on it. So having this plan in place and having something to follow up on, I don't see a magical ball of money coming forward, but like I said, it's smart for us to have the plan in place, it's smart to have it designed, it's smart to be working on it, and then whatever money is available, maybe at the end of the year when we have extra money of whatever it is, we throw a little bit more into that each year. And if we, if we have, if, as the water, as the sewer rates go down, we take whatever that may be and we add it to that budget or something, so we constantly build on it. So that we're adding, instead of like, if we're doing 2.1 million this year, maybe we do 2.5, then we go to three, then we go to four, then we, and we gradually just keep going up as that money's going on. But, you know, it's, I'd love to have to do, like you said, 10, 20 million a year, we just don't have the money. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, so one clarification, it's not an addition, so that 7.7 miles is not on top of the three we're doing, it's a net addition of 4.7, which is still going to be a significant cost. But that whole discussion around having the plan, not just where are we going, how are we going to achieve it, but the financial aspect is important. And I, you know, there are lots of possible solutions we can go down, but I think having the discussion is important, which we're now doing. And, yeah, we can look at, as sewer continues to fall off, we're putting that money towards water main replacement. Part of this initiative is to come up with a plan that this body agrees with, that we can then market. So if that's something we want to say, hey, we're going to take, as sewer levy rates drop off, we're going to start putting that towards water main replacement, that's fine, but we need something that we can market and commit to that everyone can be aware of, as opposed to, you know, there's a lot of moving parts. So I'm not saying this in a negative fashion, but a lot of what happens is a bit nebulous. So giving that clarity to residents and putting something out we can commit to, I think is going to go a long way.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. All right, we're with you, and I agree with Mr. Crapman, that if we have something on the shelf, you know, he said it never hurts to ask for money, but it never hurts to be prepared. And I totally agree with that, with something on the shelf that is ready to go. With that, any other comments on Mr. Mackey's plan? Hearing none.
I would just ask, Mr. Chairman, if we can ask Mr. Hardeman to start to put together, you know, what that looks like to Mr. Ryder's question, questions, what you would need to kind of do that either in-house design or get a design done, and if you can have conversations with Mr. Montori about that, so we can start kind of roughing out what that financing might look like, put together some of those options that have been mentioned to the table that we can look at for funding. Thank you.
That's fine. You want that, you're making that in the form of a motion?
I will make that in the form of a motion.
Can I have a second? I have a motion made by Mr. Mackey, second by Mr. Ryder. All those in favor sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well, nobody's opposed, that's a 5-0 vote.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Montori with his grab of...
I just want to pass those to Eric and Dana. So we spent some time talking about an abatement policy for water. We actually, Kevin actually sent out a request on his listserv with those that are involved with Mass Water Works, to see what people had for an abatement policy, specifically around brown water, if they were abating for people who use brown water. And nobody has a policy, most, if not all discouraged policy, saying it's opening up a can of worms, and they would not recommend one. But we took a shot at putting a policy together for abatement, an abatement policy together. You know, I know it's a lot here tonight to go through, so we can talk about it at a future meeting. But, you know, when we looked at an abatement policy for specifically on brown water or coming up with something, we kind of tried to link it to something extraordinary happening in town, and if a person, if we looked at their usage and it was, you know, 200% more than they used for the previous year's cycle, you know, that would be something extraordinary. The ones we looked at this year just weren't that high of usage, and some weren't that much if any at all. So this is something for the board to review, and we could talk about it at a future date. But, you know, it's a slippery slope when you start talking about giving abatements for water, because people have leaks, you know, that's their responsibility. You know, we, when it comes to breaks, if you're giving it for brown water, it's just going to be hard to determine the exact impact, and based on the number of breaks we have and the, you know, the amount of residents that will be requesting abatements, it becomes not only a cost issue, but an administrative issue. And again, no towns do it, based on what we looked at. So we came up with this as something to start with and look at, look for comments on, and we can discuss it at the next meeting on the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. Montori. Board members, any questions currently? Or do you want to digest this until the next meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to. I mean, thank you very much for putting this together. I would like to go through it and see what's in here and go through. And I, and I understand that when we say no other town, there are other towns that have abatements, it's just they have abatements on different things, it's just, it's not on water breaks.
No, we only zero it on water breaks.
Yeah, so this is just on water breaks. But very few towns around us have as many water breaks as we have. So, you know, we're, the residents are, you know, this isn't like every six months, you know, this is multiple times a year. And they've been very, very patient with us. And yes, we're doing our best, that's why we're having this conversation about doing it. But I'm still adamant that if we're, the correct answer is still not, you know, hey, listen, we got another water main break, run your water for, you know, 10 to 12 hours or whatever it may be to do it. We need to have a constant policy in place that after a water main break happens, the first thing after it's repaired is the DPW is going out there and flushing those lines. So this way, they don't have to sit there and be running their water for multiple hours if we're going out and we're flushing those hydrants to do it. I understand the wintertime may be not feasible, I get all that, but those are the things that, when we're telling residents that, you know, you have to run your water for hours to get rid of it, and then we're charging them much higher than most communities around, and then we're telling them they're going to pay for it again, that's not an easy pill for residents to swallow. So, yes, it may be difficult, and it is a slippery slope, but I don't, I don't, you know what, we're going to slide down that slope as far as I'm concerned, because residents shouldn't have to be paying for running water constantly when we have constant water main breaks, and then telling them, oh, by the way, run your water and pay for it, and we're charging you a lot. I mean, if there's something, if we have a major water main break, and I'm not talking about something that, like, we have a minor water main break and we go out and it's repaired in a couple of hours, I'm talking about like we had recently where the whole town was out, and people took days to be, to flushing those things. And, yeah, I honestly don't think many residents will be filing them all the time. I think there will be people that'll be upset when they start seeing those things, but we've had problems with meters, we've had problems with other things, and, yeah, when somebody sends something in, our response should never be, we don't do that. We should look and listen to every single one that comes through. And, yeah, if there's something that, yeah, they have a leaky toilet, or they have something outside that's like leaking, that, you know, it's their fault that they're not paying attention to, yeah, we're not going to do that. If you're not paying attention, doing your own due diligence, then shame on you. But if there is something that we are anyway possibly responsible, we should take, we should take responsibility for that. And so we should let the residents know that we care about the cost they're paying, and if there's anything that we can do to soften that blow when we have water main breaks, I don't want, somebody's sitting around in their house for, you know, a day without water, and then we tell them, run your water when you finally get it, and, oh, by the way, we're going to dump a bill on top of you when it's done, it's not a good message I want to send to the residents. So I appreciate putting this together.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wellman.
Thank you. Thank you for this, Mr. Montori. I will review it in advance of a more robust conversation, we have time to digest it. I was wondering if you had, however, determined a source for the funding, the abatements, and have you talked to the town accountant about how to make manual changes to Munis water bill?
We have to work that out at the treasurer collector's office.
Yeah.
You know, I'm sure we could try, we could probably figure something out, I just have to talk to them, but...
It is possible. It is.
But it would come from the water rates.
So it would take the water enterprise fund, or would we have to increase rates?
You'd have to build it into your rates, an abatement, amount for abatements.
So then what I would want to have more information on is what is the general estimated loss of water during, you know, some of these more extreme events that you're looking to do an abatement on, if you can even estimate something like that?
The amount of water we lost?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can try to figure that out.
And then, and then, you know, what's the impact on the rates to basically raise rates to cover the abatements for people who would want to abate?
Yeah, we can, we can look at...
That we can fund it.
Yeah, we can look at that in the next, before the next meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Anyone else, Mr. Chairman?
Again, thank you for putting this together. I'll review it, and we'll discuss at a future meeting. Thank you.
Ms. Mackey?
Thank you. Yes, thank you for putting this together. I do look forward to reviewing it. To Ms. Wellman's point, kind of took the words out of my mouth, if we're looking at doing this, this is, not only do we need to try to project the cost in some fashion, but this is yet another expense we need to put on to that, that scale for not addressing our water main issues. Again, we know it's going to be expensive, but when we start adding up all of these things with overtime and emergency brake fix and police details, and now abatement, it's going to continue to, we're slapping Band-Aids on a very, very broken system. So it might sound good, and it does, I understand. I have family members who've gotten brown water and have called me very unhappy, and it's miserable. But at the end of the day, we're, we're once again pushing off addressing the root cause of the issue. So I think that is something, again, to the previous conversation, that we're putting on a plan, but I think that's where the focus needs to be, is on the plan, so we can address the root cause as opposed to finding yet another Band-Aid. That does sound good, and may make some people feel good, but is going to be detrimental to the overall solution of the problem. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one last comment. So, Mr. Montori, each year when we put our water rates out, do we run a balanced budget at the end of the year, or do we always have more money at the end of the year, every single year?
No, we usually have a surplus.
Yeah, we always have money at the end of the year. So, and we, what do we do with that excess money?
We usually, because retained earnings and used to assist with water projects, water equipment, water...
But we put it back into the thing. So every year, we end up, I mean, what was last year's excess in our budget from water rates compared to what the cost was to the extra money that we brought in?
I'd have to get the exact...
Just the roughest estimate.
Last year, hold on for one second. Just pull it up. It was a tighter year than normal last year because of we didn't use as much water. So our retained earnings went up. Sorry, just give me a second. It probably was about maybe half a million dollars.
Half a million dollars. And so, and, Mr. Hardeman, the people that were asking for abatements, what was the average of those abatements?
Well, they range from $9 to $21.
Okay. So we got half a million dollars, we're bringing extra, and we got people asking for $9 and $21 for things. I understand it would be, we get more people coming in.
Once you, once you open that door, three, seven people are going to go to hundreds of people.
But we, but we're bringing in a half a million dollars excess, and that was a low year, but I'm just saying, I don't think we're going to be raising water rates to do it. We may be using the excess money we have, and that sounds like a good way to use the excess money if people are being overcharged, as far as I'm concerned, because if we're telling them to run water that they're not actually using, they're being overcharged, plain and simple. We're telling them to run water that they're not using, other than to run it down the drain to get rid of brown water. So if we have excess money, I, that's my opinion, everybody can have their own. Thank you.
Mr. Montori, the retained earning is also used to, like, buy dump trucks and...
Yeah, we use it as capital.
...that we say it's retained earning, it's really not extra money, because you might need a dump truck, or you might need a plow, or whatever equipment they use for that.
Dump truck.
I just wanted to make that a point. Does anybody else have any other comments? Hearing none. It is now, you've got 10 minutes. So how do we go to the minutes? Mr. Ryder.
Call me Afghani, the chair.
What's that?
Let's prepare.
Told you I was going to go in.
I know.
May we try to...
July 9 and 10?
July 9 and 10, the approval of minutes. Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion made by Mr. Ryder, second by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor sitting by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's a 5-0 vote. The town manager, town council invoice.
Hold on. Call me Afghani, too. Call me off guard, too.
That's why it's always paid to be prepared.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have an invoice for Town Council in the amount of $3,017.50 from August 16 through August 31, and I would recommend approval.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Second. Motion made by Ms. Wellman, second by Mr. Krapp. All those in favor, see them by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's your 5-0 vote.
We have another bill from September 1 through September 15 in the amount of $4,572.50. I'd recommend approval.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Rider, second by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, see them by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's a 5-0 vote.
And then finally, we have one for September 16 through September 30 in the amount of $4,442.50. I would recommend approval.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion made by Mr. Krapp, and second by Mr. Rider. All those in favor, see them by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's a 5-0 vote. What's next?
Donation to the senior something, maybe give it up. Somebody say up for that.
What's that?
You got the donation to the senior something. I don't know if anybody say up for that.
Yeah, let's do that. I'm trying to figure out what it is here.
Council on donations after hotel marijuana.
We have the approval of a donation of $200 to approve, approved by the board of selectmen for the senior senator. The donation was made anonymously, so I'm assuming no one's going to be here for that. It was anonymous.
Probably not.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation.
Second with gratitude.
Okay. Mr. Rider made the motion to accept the $200. Mr. Mackey, second it with gratitude.
And have the gratitude of gratitude.
All those in favor, see them by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's a 5-0 vote. I think we should probably take a quick break. We have six minutes to our next --
Appointment.
Appointment.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have recess.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no questions. Package is complete. Pretty standard ask, so I'm good to go. Thank you.
Ms. Wellman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree the packet's complete. What was the reason for the change?
The gentleman that's in charge now is looking to retire.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Rider.
All set. My questions have been asked and answered. Thank you.
Okay, and the chair has no questions. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the change of manager submitted.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Kratman, second by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, see them by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's a five-zero vote.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Good luck. Okay, next up is we have National Grid Pine Street jointne own public poll petition. Is there anyone here for that?
We're not 7:05 yet.
If you can introduce yourself for the record.
I'm Alan Furtzong. I'm here to represent National Grid.
We still have a couple of minutes before we can actually hear you. Board members, have you read the petition?
Yes.
Yes.
I do have a question on this one.
Okay. You might as well just static explaining what you're trying to do here.
Yeah.
Well, we're looking for the right to relocate pole twenty on Pine Street, about thirty-nine feet from its current location in a western direction. This is because of a new house or new residence that's being built there, and so we don't want to create any aerial trespasses for the new resident.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Have you seen the letter from DPW Department in regards to the trees issued with the trees?
No, I have not. But I think the town should have a contact for that.
Okay.
And they can reach out to forestry for any issues that you have with the trees.
Okay. Just make that recommendation that Mr. Hardeman. I don't see an issue with this. Just making sure Mr. Hardeman's questions are all addressed as part of the relocation.
Maybe making, Mr. Chairman, maybe making the approval conditional upon that being relayed to Mr. Iantilli.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, just making sure it is relocation of a pole, correct? It's not, we're not adding a new pole? Correct. Okay. Yeah, we've had some, that's my standard question because we've had some in the past where polls getting put in and one's supposed to be taken out, and years later, that pole's still there. So, glad to hear that we are actually moving the pole and not adding a new one. And yes, I would also be in favor of making conditional approval when we get to that point of making sure that DPW approval is a condition. Thank you.
Mr. Kratman.
My typical one. The sidewalks or anything that's out there. So, we are relocating the new pole to, are you putting it in a location where if there is sidewalks out there or future sidewalks, that it's put back above enough that if we were to install something out there or do some additional work, that it's, that it would be?
On the back of the sidewalk.
On the back of the sidewalk? So, it's already been addressed?
Correct. The designer for Tewksbury is well aware of where all the poles should be installed.
Okay. So, that's my pet peeve, just making sure that they're back there and that, you know, we need to do work for this town. Residents want sidewalks, so we want to make sure that poles aren't in the way. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kratman. This is a public hearing. Is there any in the public that'd like to speak on this poll petition? Seeing everybody rise, a big rush. What is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion to close the public hearing made by Mr. Rider, second by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, see them by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's five-zero vote to close the public hearing. Okay, we're back to, what is the pleasure of the board for the poll petition?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the poll petition, providing Mr. Hardeman's letter is forwarded to the contact, and all of these have been addressed.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion made by Mr. Rider, second by Ms. Wellman on the poll petition for Verizon. All those in favor, see them by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's another five-zero vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
We're still a little early for our seven-ten, so I'm going to move to Mass Cultural Council appointment, Isabella Kaylee De Sado.
Sister. De Sisto.
De Sado.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the appointment of Isabel De Sisto to the cultural council.
Still second that.
Okay, we have a motion made by Ms. Wellman, second by Mr. Kratman. All those in favor, see them by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's a five-zero vote.
Mr. Chairman, well, just a point of privilege. I just want to commend this applicant. She's a student at Emerson College, and she's getting involved in her local government, and I think that's fantastic.
Okay, we're still a little early. Council on Aging appointment, Robert Herrick. Board members.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Mr. Robert Herrick to the Council on Aging.
Second.
I have a motion made by Mr. Kratman to appoint Robert Herrick to the Council on Aging, and second by Mr. Rider. All those in favor, see them by saying aye.
Point of clarification, there's a letter in here from the Council on Aging. Sounds like they want to get back to us after their interviews. Apparently, they're scheduling interviews.
That took place at the last Council on Aging meeting I was at. They already had it, so.
They want us to appoint.
Didn't let they prefer Mr. Herrick.
Yep, they did.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, where were we? We had a motion on the floor. Who was the motion made by?
Mark. Seconded by myself.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Mr. Kratman to appoint Robert Herrick to the Council on Aging, second by Mr. Rider. All those in favor, see them by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Tree City. Ms. Wellman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I have a proclamation here for us to, that we're being asked to adopt for Tree City USA. I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if there's anybody in the room who would like to speak to this before we take it up.
You can introduce yourself for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Al Mancini, fifteen Kenner Lane. That's nice. This is Pam Borowski. Address? In the past, we've had a Tree City proclamation, which we have, we plant a new tree, basically, to make Tewksbury a Tree City. There are certain things that need to take place, one of which is a ceremony, that you plant a new tree, and was on us to find a location, and it was on us to plant it on Arbor Day. We have a, the head, the, she's a head librarian, yeah, she's the head librarian, Diane, at the library, who's willing to allow us to plant a native tree on the premises of the library. We did it last year. The previous year, we planted it at the New Center School. We actually planted a tree, Susan, who's not feeling well, organizing, and we wanted to ask the board's approval, signature, so that would be understandable. I understand you guys, it's old hat, Mr. Kratman, Mr. Mackey, and Ms. Wellman have heard me speak before, but for Mr. Holland and Mr. Rider, the benefits of having a Tree City are pretty, it's a good thing. It really is. There's a flag downstairs that says we're a Tree City. We have plaques around town, and if there's anything that you want to add.
It's criteria that we need every year.
Yes. Yes, and basically, the one thing that we don't have currently, I guess the eye that we don't have dotted, is a signature from this letter.
Okay. Ms. Wellman.
I will read the official proclamation to the record. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Tewksbury, do hereby proclaim April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, as Arbor Day in the Town of Tewksbury, and we urge all residents to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this in future generations. Dated this the twenty-second day of October, twenty-twenty-four, by the Town of Tewksbury by its Select Board.
I'm waiting for a motion to approve the official proclamation.
Second.
I have a motion made by Mr. Mackey, second by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, see them by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, and thank you very much for your.
We're ahead. We're way early.
Thank you. I really appreciate it, and you guys have been instrumental, and I really appreciate what we do. It's, it is, it is a good thing.
Yeah, it's great.
And thank you.
Thank you.
I won't take up any more time.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for your work.
Okay, now we're a little behind. Seven-ten, Coyote of Tewksbury, fourteen eighty-seven, change of alteration. Is there anyone here for that?
Yes, Ben.
Okay, can you introduce yourself for the record? Name and address.
Ben Chen, sixty-one, Tewksbury.
Okay, the floor is yours, so just tell us what you're trying to do here.
To change the premises for the new.
Can you speak louder into the microphone so that the recording secretary has to be able to hear you?
Change the premises for the new function room to adding little service bar. In the room, another room for twenty-two hundred, we want service bar and sixty-six, with two small storage rooms and restroom.
Okay, board members, any questions? We'll start with Mr. Kratman.
I have no questions.
Mr. Mackey.
I have no questions.
Mr. Rider.
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Wellman.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions. I thank you for a complete packet, Mr. Chen.
And I'm going to reiterate what Ms. Wellman said, because you were back here before, but you had to do this in a formal way. All right? So, what is the pleasure of the board? Actually, this is a public hearing.
That's right.
Anybody like to speak? Hearing none. All those in.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing by Mr. Mackey, second by Mr. Rider. All those in favor, see them by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much, and best of luck.
Motion to approve.
Okay, and we have a motion, a motion to approve by.
Change of alteration.
And seconded by Mr.
Kratman.
Kratman. All those in favor, see them by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's a five-zero vote.
Congratulations, Mr. Holland.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Mr. Holland. You're all caught up. Thank you.
L.
Ida.
Madea Indian Restaurant, nineteen twenty-one Main Street, common vixi elislations. Could you introduce yourself for the record? Name and address for the recording secretary.
Good evening. My name's Attorney Courtney Ball from Ballawal Office in Berry, New Hampshire, and I'm representing Aspabano Enterprises, Inc., which is the restaurateur down at nineteen twenty-one Main Street, running Almada Indian Restaurant. To my right is Mohammed Shaheed Shaikh. He is the trainer and the vice president, and his wife back here, the president of the corporation, is Aspabano Janualah. So, they are new Tewksbury residents, and they have run a restaurant in Burlington, Mass, for the last few years, but they sold to buy a restaurant here in town and move closer. And previously, they've been a restaurant in Boston for upwards of twenty years, so all the permits are in place, and opening tomorrow, amazing Indian food, and the last thing we need is to come and pick places.
Okay. Board members, any questions? Mr. Rider.
I'm all set, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Ms. Wellman.
I would just like to note for the record that there's quite a bit of buzz excited about the opening of this business already in the community, so I don't have any more questions. I appreciate your work on this packet. Thank you.
Mr. Mackey.
No questions. Looking forward to trying the food tomorrow.
Mr. Kratman.
No, I want to welcome you into the community. I do have just a couple of questions. You've run a business for, you said, twenty years?
Yeah, we used to run the business, seventeen years actually in the Boston, sorry. So, my in-laws started the business, and then we took over last couple of years. Then we moved from the Boston in COVID time. It's COVID time, we closed the door because that, in the food court. So, we closed this door, and we moved in the Burlington, because we're living also in the Burlington. And we run in Burlington. Actually, my in-laws, my brother-in-law also run this business, so they actually took this restaurant in two thousand eighteen, and then I came from the Boston. I took over in twenty-twenty after COVID, so I run like twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-four, and then I sold out. I actually bought the house in Tewksbury in Beach Street. So, that's why I make plan to like come to closing the residency.
Well, I love it. We have a resident that's moving through this and open a business. I really didn't have any questions, but I know the residents may have interested in, so I wanted to give you your two minutes to talk about your restaurant, so that anybody that's watching will know a little bit about you when they want to come in and see the place. But other than that, I thank you for opening here and moving to town. I welcome you.
Thank you so much, Chair.
Okay, I just have one question. This is just a common vic license, so do you have no alcohol served?
None.
Okay, the other gentleman, that he still has the license.
He used to have, yeah, but I did not take over the license.
Okay, that's, I just want to make that clarified. It's just a common vic license. This is a public hearing. Anybody from the audience would like to speak on this? Hearing none. What is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Yeah, motion made by Mr. Rider, second by Ms. Wellman to close the public hearing. All those in favor, see them by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's a five-zero vote. What is the pleasure in the board in regards to the license?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the common vicure license for Almada Indian Restaurant, nineteen twenty-one Main Street.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Mackey, second by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, see them by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's unanimous. Thank you very much, and best of luck.
Thank you. Welcome.
Okay, seven-twenty, and we have the Revolutionary War Line of March, Matthew Doocy. Okay, can you?
Gentlemen?
Yep. Just introduce yourself with your name and address for the record, and the floor is yours.
Of course. Matthew Doocy, twenty-sixth Clayborne Lane, Tewksbury, Mass. I'm a member on the board of directors of the Tewksbury Historical Society, as well as a member of the Tewksbury Historical Commission, and I'm here on behalf of the Historical Society to introduce an event that we would like to do next year in the town. I have a PowerPoint on me. Is there any way to get into this thing here?
You're talking to the wrong guy.
Did I get Brian doing? Yep. Did I get Brian doing?
Yeah. Let's see, Brian.
Do you have it on a?
There it is.
USB?
Yeah, I have a USB. I also have it on my laptop, too.
Yeah, if you want to put your laptop in your USB, I would do that.
You can do that, yeah.
You also have to cross your fingers.
You have to hold your hands way.
Stand on one foot.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Remember when you were kids and you wanted to get a signal on the TV? Yeah, back in the day myself.
All right, so as stated before, I'm here on behalf of the Tewksbury Historical Society. So, next year marks the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary of the beginning of the American War of Independence, a hugely important milestone, not only to the country, not only to our state, but also to the town of Tewksbury itself. Why? Because on April eighteenth and April nineteenth, men from the Tewksbury militia formed up on the green to respond to the threat of the British regulars stealing the stores of weapons and ammunition at Concord. And we would like to do something next year, close to the date of Patriots' Day, as close as we can. We know it's going to be a busy season for people, but we want to have historical reenactors come to the town Sunday, May fourth, twenty-twenty-five, assemble on the town common. It would then follow as closely as possible for a brief time the original route that the Minutemen would have taken in seventeen seventy-five. So, play that out for you right now. I'm sure you're all, oh dear. There we go. I'm sure.
Uh-oh.
There we go. I'm sure we're all very.
It happens.
Just ignore that. I'm sure we're all very familiar with the story of what happened. We all remember our history. If we, if you guys may have seen these stone markers around town, that's what they're there for. They're there to show the original route that the Minutemen took in seventeen seventy-five, so that's what we're going to be following. The way we're thinking of having the event planned out on Sunday, on May fourth, twenty-twenty-five, if people are in favor of it, we would like at one-fifteen for some reenactors to come, probably around, maybe around a dozen or so reenactors, depending on, depending on it. And might I say before, this event has been put on before in the past. Okay, good. So, at one-fifteen, they would assemble in the parking lot adjacent to the Congregational Church, and historically, what had happened, a sentry was posted day and night for, in case of alarm, in case the British were to march out in force, and in seventeen seventy-five, in April, it happens. So, he got the word from an unknown rider, not Paul Revere, but one of his compatriots, drove through the town, so that's what we're going to have happen at one-thirty. The rider would arrive, pass the word to the sentry, and then his alarm, his duty would be to spread the alarm by firing off his musket. So, he would fire off his musket into the air. Over the next few minutes, the historical reenactors would start to muster onto the green, showing how they would do that, and they would form up into different units, depending on how many people we have. But once, once that happens, they would march down East Street to the second line of march marker, and we would like for, at each marker, for the reenactors to salute a volley to them. I don't know how he did that, but salute, salute a volley to the original patriots. So, that's what we'll, we'll do here at the second line of march marker. They will then continue on down Lee Streets to the third, and do similarly, fire off a volley to commemorate it. Until down to the end of Lee Streets, they'll do a final memorial volley, at which point they will then go up Chandler, just into the Tewksbury Public Library parking lot. This is where their actual march would end. Of course, historically, they would continue on down to Concord, to Miriam's Corner, where they would fight there during the day. But of course, we're just going to end it off at the library, because it's a, it's a stopping point. We don't want to stop too much traffic on Main Streets, and also, it would just be a good point to kind of meet and greet and kind of get people interested in the history of it, in the history of the Revolutionary War, and in the history of Tewksbury as well. So, once they get into the parking lot, they will do a final, all, all of their groups, they will do a final volley, and at which point, they will, the unit commanders will dismiss the men, and then they will then, they are then encouraged to mingle amongst the public and kind of talk with them about what their role as reenactors are. Myself, I'm also a historical reenactor. It's a hobby that I do, and it's something I'm very passionate about, and the gentlemen and ladies and the folks that do this, you know, with me, it's not just a hobby, it's just a, it's a real passion, honestly, a passion for history, and if we can get, you know, people in Tewksbury excited about not only their local history, but also just the country's history in general, all for them, I think that would be really great, just to commemorate the two-fiftieth anniversary of this huge event. I would, I would love to hear any feedback or any questions from anyone here, just about the event, or I see the floor.
All right, any question? Mr. Kratman, we'll start with you this time.
Oh, okay. Thank you for bringing this. I saw this presentation when we talked about it at the library, when you can.
Right, yeah.
So, I, we didn't have the PowerPoint, so there you go, so this is much better. One of my greatest regrets sitting at this table is ten years ago, we had selectmen Wentworth volunteering to ride the horse, and Mr. Monterrey and I wanted to see that so badly. It would have been Dukakis in the tank all over again.
Maybe we could make that happen.
But we really wanted to see that, but one of the things that they did, they had all the, it was wonderful, the things, but they had an encampment, they had all the different things that, are you talking about doing any of that, or is this just, they're going to be there for the day, or is it something since the two-fifty? I know they, they had something out there before where they actually, people were able to go and show like a, like what it, what it was like back then, or?
Wait, that would, that would just be excellent, just because of the fact that it is the two-fiftieth anniversary of the start of the American Revolution. I, I don't think that reenactors would be, you know, because they're going to be in high demand during, all around the weekend of Patriots' Day, so hence why we're doing it on a Sunday. Hopefully, if there's other one-day events, they'll be on Saturday, so we'll have to get to, get more people to come to it. I'm not proposing an encampment, but it would, it would definitely be great to have.
Well, if you were, I mean, we're looking at approving this, and that's why I was asking that, because there probably would be some other things that we need to, if that was going to take place, that's all. I didn't see in the presentation, but I know you were talking about this, you know, in the past, about trying to do the reenactment and all those different things.
The main thing is the march for us here.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm in strong support. I love this, and getting this out and having, you know, this out to the residents and getting people that's partaking in this, and maybe even sharing it with our schools to.
Absolutely.
To get, to get the kids to be part of this and sharing. Maybe you could even talk to our school department and go in and do a presentation to them, and maybe they could get involved and just have a day of teaching, of doing those things. So, I, I love the fact that your, the Historic Society is doing wonderful jobs. I've seen a couple of things you're doing, and they were very enthusiastic to get you on this board, and now I know why. So, thank you very much for putting this work together. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Kratman.
Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this is awesome. I am fully supportive of it, understanding that they're going to be in high demand. I, for the future, wish we were doing more. So, if there are things that we can do to help, please let us know. I'll speak for myself. Let me know, right? I won't commit everyone to that, but this is, this is awesome. So, I, I remember, I think it was the twenty, I think it was.
Two-seventy-fifth.
Was that one?
The two-twenty-fifth.
Yeah, it does say two-twenty.
No, the Tewksbury.
Yes. Yeah, so I remember being a kid and having, they had the encampment all set up and all the craziness, so that was, that was awesome. So, very supportive of this. I have no questions. Uh, I'm very much in favor of it. Thank you.
Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is exciting. Thank you so much for bringing this forward. I fully support it, like my, um, my fellow members do. I had a couple of quick questions. Have you spoken to the police department about doing volleys in a residential area?
So I have not. The reason why, uh, the reason I, I first brought this up with Mr. Montori, uh, he suggested that the next step for us would be to come directly to you, the Select Board, and then from there, we can proceed and speak with the police department or the library, the schools, and from there, you know. But for the initial proposal, uh, we're just going to go for that first, and then immediately after that, I will speak to the police department and do whatever else I need to do.
The thinking was come to the board first to talk about the concept, um, and then he's going to probably come, he's going to need to come back again and march full plan with support of the police.
Yeah.
Everyone, we talked, and Matthew just wants to get here in front of the board sooner than later to talk about my thinking.
I think it's great. I think it's a great idea, and I think, I like that you're taking a very proactive approach. So that would be something I would be concerned about. And then, um, a communicate, a communication plan to the residents in that area, so that they're aware that, you know, 1:15 on Sunday, if they're not totally connected to all the fantastic things that we're doing in the community, that's not a surprise, that they're not looking for.
Right, right. As we've sent out mailers for that.
Perfect, yeah, something like that. So I think that would be great, to include that in your plan, but I think it's fantastic. And I don't know if there's an appetite. I know Mr. Sears is, uh, was a previous Select Board member, um, and Mr. Mackey and Mr. Holland and I, earlier this year, went and marked the town bounds over by the water treatment plant, very scenic moment with the town of Andover and, uh, the town of Drakett. And, um, it might be an interesting thing for the Select Board to do, um, on or about the same time with the town of Billerica, because I don't know, but I think that's maybe not directly on the line of march, but it's close, um, to mark the town bound, um, with that board in Billerica. So, um, so I'm throwing that out there as Mr. Kratman put out the, um, an encampment idea, but that might be kind of a fun thing to include at that time. Um, that's kind of an old tradition, and Mr. Montori can fill you in on that, or Mr. Sears, I'm sure, sir, can. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Ryder?
Thank you. Uh, again, great presentation. I think it will be well received in town. Um, I would recommend, uh, the Boy Scouts, um, getting them involved. I think they'd be a great, uh, uh, group, uh, to get involved and potentially help, uh, with any setup that, uh, is needed. I think also, as my fellow board members stated, the schools, working with the police chief, uh, communications, uh, reverse 911. But again, anything that we can do as a board, I think it's going to be a great event for the town. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. And I concur with my colleagues, uh, because I remember when we did the 275th and they had the encampment down at the Livingston Street. It was simply amazing.
Yep.
Um, but I agree with the board, and I'm willing to approve this. Mr. Montori, this is not a public hearing, correct?
Correct.
Um, do we need a motion to approve this? Because he's going to be coming back with all the full details.
I don't think it would hurt to approve it tonight, so he knows he has the support of the board to move forward.
Okay.
Specifically, just the actual date?
Right.
Yeah, that's it.
Mr. Chairman, what I, what I would suggest is making a motion to approve contingent on them getting the approval of the police and other departments of, of things, but it's, but we're fully supportive behind this, I just want to make that clear. But just go and get your other, whatever you may need.
Right.
But the concept, we're in favor of, so I'd make a motion to approve contingent of you being able to get all the other permitting or whatever may be needed, or approvals from departments.
Motion made by Mr. Kratman.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, see them by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Best of luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now on to residents. Are there ready residents that wish to speak? Seeing none. Moving on to new business, cell tower lease at 999 Whipple Road. Mr. Sadwick is here. If you can come up, introduce yourself for our recordings.
Mr. Sadwick? Good evening. Steve Sadwick, Assistant Town Manager. Um, I'm here regarding the, uh, lease of the cell tower at the former Dog Pound. This is actually a, um, lease renewal. We've had Crown Castle has been the operator of that, um, facility since, uh, probably 2013, 2014 was the last time we entered into a lease with, um, the operator of that. Prior to them, it was a AT&amp;T-built site. We have three carriers that are on the site right now. Um, that's Verizon, AT&amp;T, and T-Mobile. And what we do is, is when the lease expires, we put out an RFP through the central register, and, um, we had just the one respondent, which was Crown Castle. I think I provided the rent proposal form that they had given, which is, um, for a 20-year lease, it's a 10-year lease with two 5-year renewals, and the total over the 20-year period would be $3,264,818. They pretty much met the requirements of the RFP that we had put out, and there's no real change to the facility at all.
So there's, there's currently a tower there, and they're going to be using the same tower, so there is no interruption, so there is no construction or anything else like that?
Correct.
All right. Thank you for that. We'll start with Mr. Ryder this time.
Thank you. Uh, no, Mr. Sadwick answered my questions, no additional construction or, um, impact to the area. So all set.
Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Sadwick. Um, how much money did we, uh, earn from the lease, the prior lease? Do you know offhand?
Offhand, no, but I can tell you that, um, the previous lease had this 3% escalator, annual escalator in it, so...
It's just continuing on.
Right, it just continues on, so whatever that is going backwards.
Yeah, I'm not going to do that math right now.
Yeah, I'm not either.
I mean, I, I could probably do it.
We could.
Yeah, we could. No, thank you very much. Thank you, I support it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I have no additional questions. I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Kratman?
Um, I just have one question. We have the cell tower up on South Street, where it's up off the fire station, and I don't see this one very often, but I do know the one that's up there sometimes needs some maintenance. Uh, we've had panels fall off of it and other things that are going on. As part of this new lease, has anybody looked at, I mean, this is, how long has this tower been up there for?
The one at the Dog Pound?
This one.
This one here? Yeah. Um, this has been there, you know, I think since 2000, that was when the original pole was installed.
So is there any, any requirements, they're going to be out there for another 20 years, so is there any, uh, requirements for them to submit to the town? Safety and, uh, something to show that it's been inspected, it's been, I mean, like I said, I've, I've seen panels fall off the other one and then just be there, and that concerns me. And that having something that we're giving another 20 years of a lease without something that somebody says, we've gone out there, we've taken a look at this, and it's still safe, um, and that, is there a way to put something in there that will renew the lease with, but they must submit like a, some sort of like review of, I mean, I'm sure they do, some sort of thing.
Right.
But we don't see it. And I'd like to, I'd feel more comfortable if they were able to renew the lease with something that they, some sort of language or something, that they have to do some sort of inspections, that it's, nothing's going to fall off that or whatever, especially off of...
Would you, I mean, just out of curiosity, would you like that at this point, like at the beginning of the lease, like?
I, I just, I would just, I mean, like I said, I'm, I'm okay with approving this, but I would say, you know, I'd like something like with the contingency that they submit something to, to you, right? And I, and I trust the town will follow up on that.
Yeah.
I don't need something ahead of time. I just would like to put that in there to say, you know, we will vote this in contingency that they submit a safety plan of the existing, uh, facility and that it's, it's kept, you know, things like that. And if they don't, like I said, I know we've had difficulty getting them to come back out to the other location to repair things, where I've driven by and I've seen pieces off of it, and then it's like, they're very unresponsive. So while we have them, let's do it now, so...
And I understand, yes, and I think that's, that's a reasonable request, and it's something that we can ask of them, that we'll follow up on. The, the South Fire Station Tower is owned by a different company.
No, no, I get that, but I'm just, I'm just bringing it up because I see that one.
Yep.
This one is, at least is old.
Yep.
And we're going to give it to them for another 20 years. I, I don't know the condition, and I don't want to know the condition. I want them to be able to tell us that it's safe.
Yep.
We can come up with some language for the...
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Get on, Mr. Kratman?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I concur with Mr. Kratman, that have to have something at least with some type of maintenance plan, um, that it's maintained for the 20 years. So I do like the package put together, and I do like the income. So with that being said, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the 20-year, uh, lease of the cell tower on Whipple Road with the contingencies that I put forward, that, you know, the town gets some sort of security from the, uh, operator that they do maintenance and inspections of the facility to make sure it's safe.
Okay, a motion made by Mr. Kratman.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ryder. All those in favor, see them by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's a 5-0 vote. Thank you very much. You still up here?
Another...
Okay. Sale of town old parcels.
So, Mr. Chairman, my memo that I had sent to the town manager actually addresses, um, three different parcels. The first two are listed in, um, that table that I have there. Map 47, Lot 156 on Newton Ave. We had, uh, competing, a competitive bid there between a Butters, and Mr. Stowe was the one who, um, came in with the highest bid at $11,000, and that is, um, .1 acre of land, and it actually looks like it was a, um, strip of land that would have been a leg of a street off of Newton, which is kind of an odd location, but if you look at the parcel and the way that it's formed, it almost looks like it had radii at one time that would have been four or a street. That was never built out. The town has, has owned that for quite a period of time, and so the recommendation is, is that, and we do have a town meeting authority to, we have town meeting approval to sell, but we need board of selection and authority to approve the sale to this individual. So that's, that's the first parcel. Um, the second parcel, map 46, Lot 2 at 283 Pleasant Street. I think everybody is familiar with this site. That's that, um, vacant greenhouse property that's almost across the street from the high school.
Mm-hmm.
That, the town took on a tax title probably four years ago, and there's a significant amount of, um, back taxes that are owed on it. It's that $240,552. Town meeting authorized the sale of up to, um, uh, the sale of this land for market-rate housing for up to two housing lots. It is 2.14 acres, so you could get two 1-acre lots out of this, which, which is what that area is zoned as. There would be about 200 feet of frontage on Pleasant Street, and then 140 feet of frontage on Debra Drive, plus or minus. Most likely, because of that frontage on Debra Drive and the width of the lot, they would have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals for approval to get that second buildable lot on Debra Drive. It, it's all been at their risk. When we put this out to bid, we've put it out to bid three times, I think, now. We've always, we've always put in that RFP that this is, uh, purchasers' risk that they would be taking. So the response that we received was that their offer is contingent upon getting those approvals. The other thing about that site was that there were oil, there was an oil tank on the site, and that kind of stymied our attempt to sell the land in the past, and we were able to get a grant for, I think it was $30,000, that, um, paid for the tank removal. So it was really no cost to us, but it paid for the tank removal. What we're looking for, this, this bid price of $240,552 is the back taxes on it. We're not selling for what the land is assessed at, and that is because, um, there was a Supreme Court decision back in 2021, that we would, um, have to seek out the owner, the previous owner that we took it for on tax title, and pay them, um, the equity that they would have had in that, that property. So we've decided that we're going to sell for the back taxes, so that we could put these two, put this parcel, possibly two parcels, back on the tax rolls and make them, um, tax-producing parcels. Right now, they're sitting in the town's ownership, and they're doing nothing for the town, um, other than being a, um, eyesore in that neighborhood, maintenance problem for us. So that's kind of how we, how we got to that, this point with that particular parcel. And then the last one is on McCarthy Way, which I think I had provided a photo with my, um, memo, which shows you that, uh, that parcel has been used as part of 214 McCarthy Way for a number of years. It was actually fenced in by a previous owner. Uh, we've run into this in the past, and, and discussing it with, so we did have a, um, successful bidders of Andrea Taco and Brian Wisely, but in discussions with them and in discussions with the chief assessor and town council, um, there are back taxes on that, and again, for this equity issue, we decided that we should probably sell it for just the back taxes that are owed on it, which is the $1,480. That again is a parcel of .1 acre. Um, but as you can see, it's being used by the residents there at 214. The, the last thing I just want to say about all of this is that I was looking at a, um, Division of Local Services bulletin that was put out about tax title properties, and there's a number of things that are actually going to go into effect November 1st, and the way that the legislature passed what they're calling, um, um, equity theft by municipalities is that we would actually have to go out to, we would have to hire a realtor to sell tax title parcels, then we would have to go out and search for the previous owners through whatever methods that, that we have available to us and hunt them down to pay them the equity that's in the par, property. So we're trying to kind of clean up and finish this list of, um, properties that people have asked for us to sell to them, and that's kind of how we're moving forward with all of this.
And just one last thing, on 283 Pleasant Street, there is a structure on the property that whoever purchases the property needs to take down on their own, at their own cost.
Okay, um, Mr. Montori, I'll, I'll quickly, in regards to the one on Pleasant Street, didn't, do we invest any CPA funds in that?
No, we receive grant funds to clean up the, uh, oil tank.
Okay. All right, we'll start off with Mr. Kratman this time.
Um, I got a couple of questions. Um, so McCarthy Way, let's start with that one. So the people that are buying it for the back taxes are the ones that are using it, right?
Correct.
Okay. So it looks like they actually have a pool on it from what I can see.
Yeah, but it was the previous owner, yeah.
I don't think they want to share that with the neighbor, so, all right, I'm, I'm fine with that. The Pleasant one, Pleasant Street, uh, Pleasant, yeah, Pleasant Street one is the only one that really concerns me. I don't like the fact that we're putting something in there that states that if they wanted to buy it, they shouldn't, I, I can see the buyer going to, um, the Zoning Board of Appeals saying, "The Select Board approved this, but we're not doing it unless you give us our variance," and asking for a variance. And I, I feel like that we're, I'd love to get the area cleaned up, but I think that's just starting a wrong precedent for us to be saying that, you know, we're sending, we're selling it, but we're putting it on our other board, that they have to approve it after we sold it, and we're kind of like, if they don't do it, we don't get the money, kind of attitude. And I, I don't like that kind of pressure on another one of our boards to be putting that through. I would love to see it cleaned up, I'd like to see a couple more houses on there, but I, the language that they put on there makes it very difficult for me to say, you know, yes, because I, like I said, that, that's... now that you're going to put something that we have to sell it, and we have to kind of like put a stranglehold on our, our other board, that you have to give a variance, or we're not going to get the money? That kind of rubs me the wrong way. That's my opinion on it, and I'll let the rest of the board members look at it. Like I said, if they came forward and said, we're buying it as is, then it's up to them to go do it. I'd be a little bit more comfortable with that, but putting those contingencies on there, it makes me a little bit wary of doing it.
Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm on the fence about the issue that Mr. Krabman just raised. I rolled around with this one personally for a bit. I think my biggest problem is item number six, which is saying that Tuck's Berry is going to cooperate with the items three, four, and five, so going to the select board, going to the ZBA, et cetera. I can understand if, if they are only going to buy it if they can get two. Again, there's some financial aspect there. They're going to, they're going to build houses. We know that cost of building has gone up significantly. Yes, they're going to make money, completely understood. I'm concerned about us committing to being responsible for those various activities through item six. Again, I'm not completely sold yet on the, to Mr. Krabman's point, it is going to put undue pressure on the ZBA and planning board to both allow the subdivision and give them the A and R, but I'm mostly concerned with item number six. So I don't know, I don't have a real warm fuzzy on this one yet, but I will let everyone else ask their questions.
Ms. Wellman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your discussion about equity theft and so forth, so that folks understand the reason why these don't get sold at market rate, because that is a deleterious mission in today's world, and turns the town into a marketer for somebody's delinquent tax property. I have no real concerns about the conditions of the contingency sale. That doesn't worry me. I'd rather get this, these properties back on the tax rolls. Has the underground oil tank already been remediated?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so.
Everything's remediated.
Yeah, it's all set. And so this is the only bidder you've had in how many years?
This has to be possibly our fourth time.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think that this is the best opportunity before the town in order to return that property to the tax rolls and make money for our community, rather than sit there and earn no money. So, you know, I have no qualms whatsoever. Thank you.
Mr. Ryder.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a similar problem as Mr. Mackey and Mr. Krabman do. Again, you know, 1-acre lots, we've, I sat on that planning board for many, many years, and many people come in and want to build a house, and they have just under an acre, and they can't build. And we're turning around and selling a parcel to someone for $240,000, and they're getting two lots based upon their asks.
Two.
Well, two lots, two acres. But two acres that currently, the way they sit, are not A and R lots.
Don't comply, right.
Do not comply with our building requirements. So I have a hard time saying, sure, we're going to sell you this lot for $240,000. However, you have to promise that we're going to get two buildable lots out of this. So now you're getting two roughly, you know, a price of an acre lot in town today is roughly $300,000 to $350,000. Okay, he has to put a little bit of money into the development of the lot, some knockdown of the current structures on there, but he's making $300,000 to $400,000 on the lot. So I don't like that language. So I will see what the rest of the board says, but I just have a hard time, you know, with that language in there.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ryder. I can just come straight out and say I can't support this at all because of those conditions. If it was $240,000 with no conditions, I can go along with it any day of the week. But to have these conditions in there that, and the price that he's paying for the property is not a bad price, you know, so it should be upon him to do his due diligence to get the rest of it done. That's why I cannot support any contingencies. If he wants to come back and say, I'll give you the 245,52 with no contingencies, I'm all in. And that's all I have.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chairman. So we cannot, as you mentioned, cannot sell it for more, though, correct? Without going through all the extra processes? So the town, the town, the maximum amount of money the town can get from this lot is what is currently on the paper?
The back taxes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So would the board be comfortable if they, if to approve the sale? When you look at the conditions we have on there, obviously, the proposal and the select board signing a mutually agreeable PNS isn't an issue, right? The proposer's going to need to conduct a 21E, proposer will obtain a permit. The only one we're concerned about is the contingency of getting two buildable lots. Is that the one?
I would, I'm, I'm. Three, four, and five are, I mean, to me, concern.
Well, my, my thing is, this is the way they submitted it to us. They should have came to us and, like, I, now we're up against a November 1 deadline, and I'm getting it in the end of October. I hate this pressure. I'm, I don't feel comfortable with it. It's my own attitude. It's like, hurry up and do this, because if not, we're up against the gun. Well, okay, why don't we, why don't we have this in September? And then they could have came to our next meeting, and no, I have to do it now, or else. And I'm like, I'm, I'm, no, I'm not comfortable with it.
Mr. Chair, I do have one ask, Mr. Sadwick. You know, thank you for the, the last one, kind of shows the map. I think that would help. Could you do that in the future for any, just, just for the residents that we're talking about when you tell them 2.1 acres or, you know, .1 acre, what is that? And if they see that sliver, it would help them understand what we're discussing here and the concern.
Sure.
So, thank you. And I guess, can, I threw, you threw, Mr. Chair, to Tom, can we come back as a counter and say that we'll?
Sure. You can, you can, you can propose, approve the sale with no conditions.
That's what my suggestion is.
And if you do that, we'll contact the proposer tomorrow and say if you're interested, there's no conditions.
I would, the only one I would be interested in supporting is the 21E, because at that point, there's a, there's a whole other conundrum that opens up. I can understand not putting pressure on other boards and the two buildable lots, but the 21E is probably the only one that I could see myself entertaining.
Okay, that's the environmental.
Correct, making sure that the lot was in fact cleaned up.
We can keep that one in.
And the first one, obviously.
Sure, if it's one.
Mutually agreeable, yeah.
So one and two?
So one and two.
What's wrong with three? They have to get a permit.
Yeah, I mean, they have to get a permit anyway, but.
Yeah.
Right, so.
I think that's really, three is really.
Deminimy.
It is, it's a requirement to build one lot, one home on it. I think that's a requirement anyways. I don't have a problem with three. I just see.
So four, five, and six.
Four, five, and six would be.
Okay.
What's wrong with four?
It's a four, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, what's wrong with five?
Lot splitting.
It's a lot splitting. It says.
We split lots all the time.
No, I'm not, I'm not.
It's not, two, it's two non-conforming. No, so one conforming, it would form a second non-conforming lot that would be ZBA.
Correct. It would be one conforming lot, would be the one on Pleasant Street. The non-conforming lot would be on Debra Drive. So, I mean, in many occasions, we've had, you know, when I was on the planning board, individuals come in and make offers to abutting parcel owners on Debra Drive, maybe that to gain that extra 25 feet of frontage on each side to get that, so.
Can I make one other comment, Mr. Chairman? So if, this was a typical parcel, or somebody was coming forward, they'd be notifying the neighbors. Maybe, if they was talking about, if they were going in front of zoning, and they had to go in and do some sort of thing, so to kind of put in a contingency that we approve something that the neighbors don't even know about.
We're not approving anything neighbors don't know about.
Let me finish. So that they want us to, they'll only buy it if it does get approved.
Right.
So that's like a contingency that, like, we're going to sell it, but we're putting something out there that is kind of is putting undue pressure, as far as I'm concerned, on our other boards, that we don't get that money, and we get, and the same thing is going to be told to them, well, there's an empty lot, it's been like this, it doesn't have the frontage. Well, there's other people up and down that roadway that probably maybe have other lots, and they don't have that same, you know, like, that, you know, maybe they have something, they don't have enough frontage, and they wanted to develop another lot, or somebody else is out there. Now it's a town land, we want to get money, and now all of a sudden, we're putting something in a neighborhood that, as far as I know, the neighbors even aware that somebody wants to put two lots out there, and are they in favor of it? Right? No idea. And, and that's, putting that kind of pressure on somebody and just, we're selling town land, and we're changing something in the neighborhood. Maybe the neighbors would all be in favor, because it's been covered and overgrown and things like that, but maybe they wouldn't, and I don't know that. So that's, that's my concern of where we're at.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mackey.
Through you, to Ms. Sadwick, this doesn't mean they get to circumvent any process, such as notifying neighbors and abutters.
No, not for any, not for anything before the zoning board of appeals. But I will tell you that, so the approval not required before the planning board, that is not a public hearing notice or anything else. That's, in fact, the planning board is compelled to act on an approval not required plan within 21 days of receiving it. Otherwise, it's approved.
Automatically.
Automatically, so.
Right.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wellman.
Thank you. So to Mr. Mackey's point, they would still have to go through all of the same public process that any other applicant would have to, correct?
Yes.
The same public process? So the neighbors would be notified for certain things, obviously not, as you just explained, which would not be any different, they wouldn't be treated any differently, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Secondly, I, for me, I don't see how this is tremendously different than any of the cannabis businesses that we approved, and all of those sales were contingent upon the getting their, you know, the approval of all of the boards. So, you know, I, I think that contingency sales are pretty common and not unusual. So I appreciate the concern about putting an undue pressure on the planning board, but I think our planning board is certainly capable of managing that process, and if they don't find that it's an acceptable use, and they don't think it's acceptable, then it doesn't sell. But we're holding it up, and I don't think we want to hold it up any further. That's my opinion. I, I think, I have no problem, I think our planning board is eminently capable of determining if this is an adequate use of the land.
Mr. Chair, one second. Again, I, oh, sorry, Steve.
I was going to say, and zoning board of appeals.
I beg your pardon, yes, and zoning, I apologize. Yes, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, and, and I understand what you're saying, Ms. Wellman. I'm just concerned that this is a town parcel, and, and having sat on that board.
Yeah.
We turned people down, because they didn't have an acre of land, or they didn't have the frontage, and we told them, you need to go back and talk to your neighbors, talk to the neighbors, talk to your butters. And they, in fact, went back and purchased slivers or land and paid for all of that. Again, I think if this, he's still, the individual purchasing this is still getting a good deal at $240,000 for 2.1 acres of land. No stipulations. For $240,000, he's getting one buildable lot. And if, if it's on them to do their due diligence, I just don't like the fact we're going to, you know, if the planning board gives us this, if the zoning board gives us the approval process. I just think, you want the land or you don't want the land. That's your, you, you go out, you put your proposal in, I just don't like those what-ifs in there.
And I totally get that, and I think on the town side, it's do we want to sell it or not? Do we want to get taxes on this or not? It sounds like with two lots, you could potentially get a fair amount of taxes that would benefit the community. And I don't know why the planning board couldn't go back and say, did you talk to your neighbors, and would you consider buying land from them to expand the size of your lot? That, that question could still be asked to them, and it still could be denied, and I put my faith, my full faith in the planning board to manage that process.
Mr. Chairman, one more question through you to Mr. Sadwick. A and R requires zoning compliance, though, correct? Which this wouldn't have, so they'd have to go to ZBA first?
Well, you could do.
That's why I asked. This is not my area of expertise.
So they can, sometimes, an applicant will go to the ZBA first and walk into the planning board for their A and R, saying, we have this variance which would make this a compliant lot. That's one way of doing it. Other times, the planning board can approve an approval not required plan and have it say that their approval does not necessarily mean that it's zoning compliant. So you have a plan that shows two lots that have, that have been created, the board is saying, we're not saying that this is compliant. That happens to fall with the building commissioner, where he's going to say, I'm going to give you a building permit, because this one's an acre, and you have the right amount of frontage. That one, I can't give you a permit on, so it's up to them to get the variance at the ZBA. So they can, you can do it either way.
Okay. Thank you.
We can do it concurrently, too.
Yes.
Okay. I still don't like the idea of somebody demanding, well, not demanding, but putting the contingencies in there that we guarantee them everything's going to pass. I just don't like that. I, I can keep one, two, and three in, four, five, and six absolutely not, and I'm still hesitant on number three, because that's guaranteeing them. They're easy.
Mr. Chair, I, then I'll make a motion to send a amended proposal back to the bidder, removing, leaving one, two, and three, removing the back portion.
Four, five, and six.
Yes, four, five, and six, and put the onus on them.
Okay.
Again, I want to, I'd like to see this property on the tax rolls. I just, I don't want to set any type of precedent with any property moving forward, you know, having dealt with multiple properties come in front of us that did not meet the requirements, and we pushed them back, and now we're taking an action without that being done. I just.
But this board doesn't take that action.
No, we don't. We're taking action approving the sale of this.
Contingent upon.
Contingent upon that.
Taking everything out.
Again, we're approving it. I think if that's the case, tell them to go to the planning board, tell them to go to the zoning board, and come back to us. If they wanted, if they really want to do that, let them go back to the zoning board, let them go to the planning board, and come back to the select board once they have that in hand, and that takes it off of us. That's another option, so.
So just so we know how to move forward, is it, the board is approving, first of all, we have three parcels, so make sure we break those out.
Right.
So for 283 Pleasant Street, the board would approve the sale, but removing contingencies one, two, and three.
Only leaving.
I mean, four, five, and six, right?
Four, five, yes. That's the motion.
And that's the motion made by Mr. Ryder. Do I hear a second? I will second that motion. Motion made by Mr. Ryder, second by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, say the same aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
Mr. Krabman opposed, and Ms. Wellman opposed, so that's a three to one. So if you can send.
Two.
Three, two.
Three, two.
Three, two, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
If you can send that confirmation back.
Yep, we'll do that.
No?
And.
Now the other two parcels.
Do I make, should we take them separately, Mr.?
Are we doing them separately?
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve Newton Ave, map 47, lot 156, for the $11,000.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Ryder, second by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, say the same aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, that's a 5-0 vote. Now we're on to McCarthy Way.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the sale of parcel 81-220 for the sale price of $1,480.
I have a second. We have a motion made by Mr. Mackey, second by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, say the same aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, and he opposed. Nobody opposed. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before we move away from this, I just want to ask a question. We've been selling parcels of lands to residents all along recently. We've had a number of them coming up, and so this is a setting, are we setting a new, or just setting on back taxes on, that's what we're going to go forward, or, because it's, we, I'd like to know what we have for land in the town. Because, as I said, if we're setting this up that anybody can get anything for the back taxes, I can see us getting overwhelmed with all of a sudden, people saying, I'm going to buy this, I'm going to buy that, especially with the new regulations that are going on, building accessory developments. I like, I want to, I want to know, like, where and how we're moving. of a sudden, people saying, I'm gonna buy this, I'm gonna buy that, especially with the new regulations that are going on, building accessory developments. I like, I wanna, I wanna know, like, where and how we're moving forward. We're starting, we're starting down a different road, that's all.
Just to explain the process, is how it's worked to date, is really, the town manager would get requests from a butters about property that's next to them, and so, so Richard was kind of just, it was a long list that kept growing each year, and so, we started taking them to town meeting in batches, and that's how, that's how we started this whole process. This 283 Pleasant Street is, is a very unique situation, that it, when we took it, there were close to another third party that was trying to intervene in the whole process, and trying to get us to do some things as far as relieving tax liability, and which we wouldn't go for. So we ended up taking that. So that one, I kinda set off to the side, and said, that's just a different thing. Going forward, nothing's gonna go forward without town meeting approval. So we're not, it's, right now, there's no interest or appetite on our part to take anything to town meeting. That's not to say that you may not get a petition from residents to sell land next door to them, but I don't think, right now, we're looking to bring anything forward.
The new law has made it very difficult to sell land in the future, and there'll be no incentive for us to move some of these small parcels if we have to chase owners or previous owners, and...
That's, that's kinda my point, is that there's no appetite to do in the future, because we're not getting that much money for it, but here we are.
It's not even the money, it's, they've made the process so cumbersome.
Yeah, I know, and so it's just, but that's the thing, it's just, and so that's the way, but, but yet, we're, you know, knocking out these last couple, and it's just, and it's, I guess that, I, I can see somebody coming forward to us, saying, you know, oh, you know, I get this a piece of here, or a piece of that, I'll, what is the taxes on it, or something like that, and just move it forward, and what's the answer? We say no?
To me, it seems like it's a, it's, I don't know, dog chasing his tail, because now, you couldn't find the person when they owed you the money, and now you wanna give them money.
Oh, yes. That's right.
My concern, it's just past practice, and what we're doing, that's all.
Yes, and I'm sorry, one more thing. If, if we don't find the person that we owe the money to, we have to turn in that money to the state, it goes to their unclaimed funds. So, so really, there's no incentive at all for us to do this.
I, I understand the process, but like I said, it just, we're setting something up for past practice, like, if we do it now, if somebody comes forward and says, I want this, and it's like, and you've already done it, it's hard to say no, even though there is no incentive for us, but I could see somebody coming forward with this, looking, I, in the past, it was always a great deal, because it was a homeowner that had a sliver of land, and maybe now they could build a family suites onto it, or something that allowed them to do something that benefited the community. Now I feel like we're in a difficult position where, I don't know, like I said. Thank you.
Two clarifying questions, Mr. Chairman. One, that only applies to property taken by tax title, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Two, town meeting vote is still required before any of these parcels can be sold, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you. It's all right, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, we're all done with this?
Presidential.
What's that?
The presidential.
Steve, it's a good time. Good discussion.
All right. Next up is presidential state election warrant.
You gonna read all that, Mr. Chair?
I think you're reading it into the record.
Suspension of the reading.
So, Mr. Montori, basically, this is, what are we doing? We're approving the warrant?
Mm-hmm, for the election, for the November 5th election.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the presidential state election warrant that's submitted from the clerk's office.
There's a motion made by Mr. Krappman.
Second, I have a question.
Okay.
Um, this is, isn't early voting already happened?
That's what I'm trying to say.
We're a little late signing the thing. Okay. But it's still a legal warrant?
Yep, it's a legal warrant.
The constable will be like, that's okay. All right, just, just to have that on the record. All right, cool. Second.
Any other questions? There are none. I had a motion made by Mr. Krappman, second by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Okay, tentative 2025 select board meeting dates. Okay, anybody, any issues or any comments?
Mr. Chairman, have we looked at, I know we've gone through this before, we looked at all the holidays, and there's no religious holidays or anything that, I mean, I know we do our due diligence, but we seem to always bounce into something that...
I'll double check on that. Usually, the October dates sometimes, but we'll double check.
I look at those dates today, they're fine, yeah.
Why is January 28th in red? Is that something that...
Because you're in trouble.
I don't know. We'll find out on January 20th.
I'm guessing, I'm guessing that's a mistake, they put the special town meeting dates in red, and I'm guessing that they probably meant to put the annual town meeting and special town meetings in red, and just kinda put it in the wrong, my guess.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2000 draft's meeting dates of 2025.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Ryder, second by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's a 5-0 vote. All right. Retail marijuana regulations, change of hours. Mr. Montori, can you fill us in on that?
So the two, the two approved retail marijuana facilities sent in separate requests that I forwarded to the board, asking for the hours to be changed. I think currently, our regulations call for them to be closed at 8 o'clock at night, and they would like to close at 10.
So there's no opening, new opening?
No change on the opening, just the closure.
And what time do we have them close now? Eight?
Eight.
And they wanna change till 10. I don't know if I'm comfortable doing, I, I understand what their need is, that is, to maximize their, their income, but we haven't sold one thing out of these stores yet. So I'm not comfortable supporting changing the hours. We don't even have six months worth of experience, or what the impact is, and I think we should wait at least six months after the store finally opens. What are the thoughts of the other members?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, I, I looked at the other hours of other operations, and the majority of the other communities are 10 or 11 o'clock. My concern is, I don't know why we put in 8 o'clock. I think this amperance our community with, when's peak hours of traffic? You know, 5, 6, 7, and up to 8 o'clock, or whatever it is. You get on the road at 9 o'clock in most of these locations, there's nobody on the road. Putting something at 8 o'clock is making people try to get there during the peak hours. Having the extended hours, maybe somebody's gonna say, I'm not going down there at 5 o'clock or 6 o'clock, I got till 10 o'clock to get down there. I think, I'm not worried, I'm not really concerned about their revenue, I'm concerned about our traffic. I think it's beneficial to us to allow, I mean, the other businesses that are in the same locations are open till 10, 11, or 12, and why are we putting stipulation on another business that's right next to them, that they have to close up at 8, that may be high traffic? Having the longer hours, I think, it's kinda spreads out the traffic. I think it'd be beneficial to us. I understand your concern of making it, but I, I think if anything, it, it kinda spreads out the traffic, and be, somebody doesn't have to rush down there during rush hour, and that's, I, I think it's beneficial to, in my perspective.
Mr. Chairman, right now, both applicant, both licenses are asking to be open seven days a week, 9 a.m. to 10 p.m. Our current regulations call from Monday through Saturday, 10 a.m. to 8, and on Sunday, 12 to 6.
So they are going.
So they want an hour on the other end, too? That's why I asked a question.
Yep, I just pulled it up.
Thanks, more on Sunday. Mr. Chairman, just some thoughts. I can appreciate they're trying to get a time change prior to opening, because they wanna put it on their marketing materials, put it on the website, put it on their door, and so forth, and not want to change that at a later time, and I don't, I don't have an issue with that. And, you know, similar businesses, alcohol businesses are open later, and I think that this is roughly in line with what alcohol sales stores, so liquor stores versus restaurants, because they can't, they can't, you know, consume on the premises. I think this is in line with a, with a similar kind of business. So I don't, I don't have a problem approving it. We can, you know, munch the times, particularly for Sunday, but I, I appreciate that they're coming before us now to wanna do this, so before, it's kind of, it's set in everybody's mind that it's 8 p.m., and then six months later, it changes, or a year later, it changes, and then it's confusing, and they've lost business to Lowell, who has, you know, sales later, so.
Mr. Ryder?
I will agree with Ms. Wellman. You know, our liquor stores are open till that time. You know, I think just following in line with that, and again, Sunday, if we wanna adjust a little, but I think the 10 o'clock, you know, it, it may spread out the traffic, it may push some of the, trying to get there to, it gives them a little more time. So I don't see it being an issue, but I agree, it's, it's probably wanting to get there, all of their material in place, signage and paperwork, so I don't see an issue.
Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the town manager, Mr. Montori, did they explain what the impetus was for this request?
One, had a little bit more detail, just based on how they operate in other locations. They're usually people waiting at the, you know, waiting for the doors to open, and they feel that it would just be, they'd be at a disadvantage if their hours were in similar to other locations.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Mr. Montori, does it affect the, the agreement? Do we have to go back and change everything?
I'd have to double check to see if the hours are in the agreement. We just have to update our regulations.
Okay. Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'd make a motion to approve the requested hours, change of hours of operations on the retail marijuana regulations.
Yes, you're gonna vote amend the regulate, change the regulations for hours to be 9 to 10, seven days a week?
Okay, what, wanna repeat that motion?
I'll make a motion to amend the requested things from 9 a.m. to 10 p.m., seven days a week, the town took priority, per requested, for the marijuana regulations.
I have a motion made by Mr. Krappman.
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
And chair votes nay, so that's a four to one vote. All right, next on the agenda is National Grid easement for DPW and school maintenance facility Whipple Road.
Mr. Chairman, in a package, a standard grant of easement from National Grid for them to bring the power lines into the DPW, and to locate the transformer for the new DPW school maintenance facility. It's a standard easement that we've signed in the past. Town meetings have given the approval to the board to grant the easement, and it just needs board approval tonight, so we can continue to move that project along.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a quick question. The easement is just for coming down off the, this...
Coming off the road onto our property.
Yeah, so it's coming off of Pine Street, and coming into, so we're just giving them an easement to, they're not gonna have any structures or anything on this easement, it's just where they're...
They're gonna, they're gonna bring their poles, their wires in, and then there'll be a transformer.
Yeah, okay. I'm just looking at a butters and anything else that may be out there that may be, this won't conflict with any sidewalks, or any installation, or anything in...
We'll make sure of that.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe they said there was gonna be four poles that were gonna be removed, and then on the plot plan, I'm only seeing three that are gonna be removed. So obviously, just making sure we get all the old poles, is my only concern.
Four.
There is four, right?
Yes. Okay, your finger went...
The X.
1, 2, 3, 4.
No, so the Xs are the removal. So, under the 2, 27-5, 27-4, and then P 28 are being removed. There is, I'm not, where's the fourth one?
27-3.
27-3, it's just a big X.
Oh, it's just, it's just a big X.
In circle, yes.
So we're not following the legend, okay, okay, thank you.
Ms. Wellman?
No, I, I love that there's gonna be underground utilities there, I think that's great, and it's resilient, and I have no issue.
Mr. Ryder?
I'll set no issues, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I have no question. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion, go ahead, Jane.
No, you do it. You were doing it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the grant of easement for the DPW school maintenance facility in Whipple Road.
A motion made by Mr. Ryder?
I'm gonna take your thunder.
I didn't want to have to remember.
I have a second.
Yeah, I seconded it.
And a second by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Okay, now we're up to Trahan reuse discussion. Mr. Montori?
So, the board has heard both proposals from the applicants interested in leasing the, either the Trahan school itself, or the property at Trahan, that the Trahan school is located on. We spoke to the second applicant this past week, just to confirm some things that were discussed at the board's selectmen's meeting. He would like funding from the Affordable Housing Trust to pay for the demolition of the Trahan. He believes if the money is provided to him, he could do the demolition cheaper than the town, so we'd have to work out that issue, and he would seek an additional $200,000 from the trust for an elevator for the new building that he's constructing. So other than that, you know, both projects are gonna lease the property at a nominal amount. The first proposal that the board heard is for a dollar a year, this one is for $100 a year. They both have different asks from the Affordable Housing Trust because of different needs for their project, but it really comes down to, how does the board feel about the merits of each project? It's not really coming down to any financial issue.
We'll start off with Mr. Krappman.
You know, I, I think I made my feelings clear at the last meeting. I, I was more in favor of the first proposal. I think the use of just senior housing on this location is beneficial to the community. All of it counts against the faulty B cap, the way it is. Using the existing building, using historic tax credits, making the senior housing a little bit larger and more usable for what would be out there, and having those patios and decks, and making like, a nice community for them, having less traffic that goes through the development. I, I know there's the need for more, like I said, affordable housing for everyone, but we, jamming it all on one parcel is not the solution, as far as I'm concerned. I, I think this should be dedicated for one specific reason, is my perspective, and using the trust, you know, Housing Trust Fund to make, we have such a long wait of senior housing, that it's a priority. Yes, there's a wait for regular housing, but that's something that I, we have a very large senior population in this community. I think that would make the place a nicer place, I think it would leave more open space for the community, and it just would be something that would be welcoming and nice, that would be there. The other one, I, yes, I like the fact that it combines and puts little houses, and yes... The other one, I, yes, I like the fact that it combines and puts little houses, and yes, we could get more tax revenue out of it, but is it something that is what the community wants down there? You know, they've been very clear in that area that they don't want more congestion. They've been putting up with a lot of what it is. And as far as they're concerned, some people would just like it to be an empty lot, or a park, or something like that. But I also have to listen to the local residents, but I also have to listen to all the residents when we're talking about spending $2.5 million to tear down a building and have nothing there, just for the cost of that. So bringing somebody in that would create something that would be nice for the community, that's why I was in favor of senior housing. That's my perspective. I like the first proposal. We can look more at them, but that's the way I took it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in favor of the concept of the bungalow proposal, which also threw you to Mr. Montori. All of those units go on, correct? Okay, so they would all be counted towards our affordable inventory?
That's correct.
So both projects have that. This project would cost us significantly less and would allow us to use additional funds to either buy down the AMI on some of those units, or have further discussion around increasing the number of senior units. We do have a need for senior housing, but we have a need for all housing. So while I want to make sure that this includes a senior component, I think that we can have additional discussions with the applicant about upping the number of senior units. Again, I, it's not perfect, the bungalow proposal, but it's, I think that's what right looks like in my mind. I just think there are some minutias that need to be worked out and tweaks that need to be made to the proposal, so not, I wouldn't be in favor of approving the bungalow proposal as presented, but big fan of the concept.
That's it?
Thank you.
Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I loved Mr. Hettison's design. I thought that was, that was a good, the first project was very exciting, and I liked that it made the reuse of the Trahan very interesting in a way that I didn't think could be used previously. What I didn't like as much about it is that the playground and the accessible portion of the property that would be for community use was still kind of tucked back in the corner, with the exception of, you know, kind of perimeter trails. So I thought that, at least in terms of residents being able to use open space on that parcel, the second proposal met that need better by bringing that land, that space forward, and incorporating it also into the life and the culture of the community that they want to build there, particularly with the front porch concept for the seniors' building. Mr. Montori, a question through the chairman to you. I thought that 40B didn't count if there was age restriction on it. You couldn't age restrict that, or is that something else?
We'd have to double check.
I wonder if that's changed.
We'd have to double check.
In the recent world. I'm not sure that it counts if it's strictly age restricted, but if it's a combo project, it may. I'm not sure, so it would be good to have clarification on that. If we want to react to what residents in that area want, and something that I've been a proponent of for a long time, as this board knows, is to maintain the whole parcel as open space and leave it as a park for the community. And that was my stand for a long time. That was what the study showed for the residents in that area, and I shared that. And I have had that same position since I was on school committee, and knew that eventually we would be replacing the Trahan school. That being said, by virtue of my role on this board and the phone calls I get for housing all the time, for seniors and for families, and the goals of this board that we have elucidated to do work to promote housing, I think that it's incumbent upon us to meet the needs of our community that are here right now, that can't find housing, for young families and young people to find housing that's affordable. I think that the second concept that was presented at our last meeting was very well done. I'm familiar with some of the other projects he had presented in his body of work, and they're exceptionally well done. I'm not concerned about a difference of traffic in that area. As previously was stated, the school was in operation. There were teachers and parents, faculty and staff there. It was used for recreational purposes. I don't see a substantive difference in the amount of traffic in and out of that site, except that there probably be less in and out, you know, in the afternoons and in the mornings, compared with the buses and the cars of the employees. So I think that it's probably a net negative compared to the active use of that site when it was occupied. So, and not to filibuster, but I do think that it is, it is something that this board needs to address, and I, I think all of us over time have spoken over and over again about a need for housing. The second project uses less of our Affordable Housing Trust to provide more units and does it quicker than the other option. The other option costs more because we have not complied with MBTA communities, and we may not, and so some of those, those grants won't be, won't be available to us, so we wouldn't, you know, we would have to front that money ourselves. And that's fine, but I think that the better value is to be sought with the second concept. And I would echo Mr. Mackey's comments that we can go back to the proposer and amend how we want, how many units, you know, or how we would want that to look. It may not be at that full usage, if we're serious about housing. So I, I know that there's a need for open space and recreation in that area of town. I think that this solution offers some of that. It doesn't take away the playground that's already there, but it doesn't furnish, you know, much more that you could have if we left it as an open space. So, you know, that's, that's a hard decision. We're elected to make hard decisions, and, you know, I want to have green space in that area, too. It's going to cost us a lot of money to take down that school if we pay it for prevailing wage, and we, and we contract that out, that we don't really have. So we can't use the Affordable Housing Trust to knock down that school ourselves, because it's not an acceptable use of that fund. Is that correct?
We've-
Just if we were to keep it as open space?
Oh, correct.
Yeah. Yeah, if we were just to keep it as open space. Because it's for the purpose of creating affordable housing, we can use that.
Correct.
So, you know, we know that we're looking at a financial future that's uncertain, and we have to pinch our pennies, and I think that we need to be as judicious as we can and create, do our best to create housing where we have availability. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wellman. Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, both proposals were great. I think the, you know, it was, the first proposal's nice, all senior. Concern I have there is it's roughly $5.5 million, $500,000 upfront, and then there's no guarantee that they're going to receive any of their state funding that is going to help them push that project across the finish line. The second proposal, I will agree with the other board members. I didn't like it the way completely it sat as presented. I think it can be tweaked. You're looking at roughly $2.2 million, give or take, a couple hundred thousand dollars for the elevator, roughly $2 million, if not less, if we can work out an arrangement for the developer to tear that school down without any prevailing wage funds. That's going to be a significant savings. And, you know, traffic studies are going to be done as the planning board process, no matter what goes in there. I agree with Mr. Krappman and the concern of traffic over there, but that's all going to be worked out in the end. And I think what's in that neighborhood, I think that second proposal with their little, with the little cottage style is, is going to fit well in there. I think relocating the, or reorienting the front section with the sport court or the playgrounds in necessarily, maybe a little bit farther away from the senior housing. But I think that's, those things can be worked out. Can we shave off a couple of the cottages, maybe make that bigger to add more of the senior housing? I think that's possible. It's possible to put another smaller building with senior housing in the back and see what, how that works out. But I think that, you know, what the residents are looking for across the entire town, not just that area, we need housing, not just senior housing. We need affordable housing, and this kind of helps move us in both directions. So I think the second proposal would be beneficial. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Wright. You know, I concur with Mr. Wright and Ms. Wellman and Mr. Mackey on the second proposal, but I do have some concerns, and that being that when he presented us two weeks ago or a week ago, we weren't spending any money out of the trust fund. You know, now we're buying elevators. So I would like to have a session where we can go through each proposal side by side, find out what the benefits, the pros and the cons are. I think if we spend a half an hour or an hour before a meeting, we start at 6:00, we may have that working session, just to, so we're all on the same page, what's our pros, what's our cons. But I do like the second one better. And like Mr. Wright has said, you could always just move things around if need be. But I do have some other concerns that I would like to have ironed out by the person who made the proposal, and that is how they manage it, who manages it? How are the tenants selected? You know, are tenants vetted? You know, we have places in town that run a tight ship and other places in towns that don't, you know? So those are the questions I would like to get the answers to. I know we can't do it tonight, but I would like to have another 6:00 start, if we may, to just, again, to discuss the pros and the cons of each concept.
One alibi, Mr. Chairman?
What's that?
So one alibi. The proposer for that, those bungalows, did say there were two instances that may cost us additional money. One was the elevator, the other was either buying, adding more affordable units, or adding, changing the AMI on some of those units. So he did call out those two areas that may be additional cost.
But he didn't say we were going to pay for the tearing of the school down. You just said that he was, we had to pay to tear the school down.
Well, he, well, he stated, his proposal was based on a blank slate.
Okay.
Yeah, he did, he didn't say who was, he just said his proposal was based upon there being nothing on the site, so.
Yeah, I also was very sensitive, looking for inconsistencies after how the first one went, so I-
Right, and that's the thing you have to investigate a little bit further.
Sure.
Yeah. So what is the pleasure of the board? We want to add this to a December meeting or the next meeting? Mr. Montori, I don't know what the next meeting looks like, but I think it's a long one.
It's a long one, but if you wanted to take a, you know, half hour to just do a side by side on this, or less than a half hour, we can do that. And if there are things you want me to have the second proposer look into, such as increasing senior housing or whatever tweaks, you can let me know, and we'll, we'll reach out to him.
Okay, so why don't we start the meeting at 6:15, 45 minutes to this?
We'll start at 6:00.
6:00.
Yep.
Okay. Everybody on board?
Do the best I can.
For our next meeting?
I will try.
Yeah. 6:15. Yes, 6:00 a.m.
Okay. All right. Now we're on to the state hospital discussion. Mr. Montori?
Been waiting all night.
This was a late add to the agenda, based on an incident that happened on Sunday evening, where another individual left a state property. The individual that left a state property was there. He wasn't a confined patient. It was a patient that was there and could leave on their own if they wanted. It was a medical person who walked away, but they were there on medical reasons. So the, they were found, he was found later in the evening. I think it happened around 8:00, somewhere later in the evening, they found him. We met with the state hospital yesterday, select board member Krappman, myself, members of the delegation, and members from the state hospital met. The fire chief was there also. We talked about a number of things, and we talked about this particular one, but it's just another incident that happened there, and the board asked to put it on the agenda to discuss. Before we end the discussion on the state hospital, we've been, the administration has asked that the board come to the state hospital for a tour, and for a meeting, and for a presentation on the most recent, on the completion of our security assessment that I think will be very helpful and very informative. So hopefully, we can come up with a date before we leave tonight's meeting. But this is more of a discussion I think the board wanted to have, amongst themselves and path moving forward.
I think the community would like 10 hours long.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I reached out to Mr. Montori after this latest incident. You know, I reached, I received multiple emails, messages, calls about what is continuing to take place at the state hospital. There's been seven incidents since May of individuals leaving the property. We had the state hospital officials in here in July. One of the very low-hanging items there were communications, radios to communicate with the Tuxbury Police Department. That has yet to happen. We're talking $1,500 a radio, and that has yet to take place. What kind of confidence do we have that this assessment is going to have any funding behind it? We can't purchase a $1,500 radio. That's embarrassing. It's embarrassing to the residents of this town. As a member of this board, our priority, the residents of this town, the safety of the residents of this town. This isn't a matter of if, it's a matter of when something is going to happen to a resident. We've had an incident two weeks ago where two employees were overtaken by an individual that should not have been there. That individual should not be at the state hospital. I don't know what happened. Five to seven years ago, policies have changed, and individuals have been put at that state hospital that were not there in the past. Over 100 years that hospital's been in this community, this has not happened until recent years. It's unacceptable. The residents are being put second to the individuals at that state hospital. What I'm hearing and what I'm seeing is there is no commitment, none. We can't buy a radio. The police department has offered radios to the state hospital. We have not heard that they picked them up. Again, this is a state hospital that has funding for everything else in, up there, but they can't fund security measures. I'd feel safer if that was a prison up there. It'd be fenced off, would have security guards, would have prison guards, and would know what's going on, would know the individuals that are there. The people at that state hospital do not know who is at that institution. I'd like to know what changed and how these individuals are being put there. And I'm not, I understand that these individuals need help, but if they're being put there and they have criminal records, they should be in a facility that is locked down, not at an open facility like the state hospital. They do not have camera systems in place, they do not have fenced-in areas, they do not have the training for those individuals up there. The security has not been trained. It's not their fault. It's the lack of investment by the state. It's been the lack of investment by our representatives getting the funding for up there. At what point is this board going to sit here when something happens, and we have an outcry from the residents? And we have an outcry from the residents? We are surrounded by senior housing, a park, a Little League baseball field, a library, and residents that are outside with their children, elderly people. I live on North Street. This last individual walked right down my street. My next-door neighbor, I have two young children. My wife, I have young kids. I do not trust the individuals that are up there and being allowed to walk free. At what point is something going to change? Is it going to be when something horrific happens? And I hope, I hope that our delegation, we have one here tonight, one. We have two other representatives.
Three.
Three. Well, Mr. Feingold, I've already spoke to him and told him my displeasure of what's going on up there. Two other individuals, they do not care about Tuxbury. They do not care about the residents of this town. The only time that they come around here is during a photo op, and that's unacceptable to the residents in this town. And if they don't like that message, come to the meetings, be part of this community, listen to the residents, and do something before someone gets hurt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Ryder, for your comments. I concur with most of them. I'm glad that the board, this board has been invited to go to the hospital for a tour. Sign me up. I would love to go. It seems remarkable to me that no matter how many times we talk about this for years, progress seems entirely elusive. I don't understand why they were here in, what was it, June?
July.
July. Oh, excuse me. They were here in July, so May and June, they were here in July, and this continues to happen. And there doesn't seem to be a sense of urgency on the part of the leadership there to fix what seems to be some structural problems. I've seen the preliminary security study that was done, that they need to move a little faster with implementation to the points that Mr. Ryder made. I feel a tremendous lack of confidence in this institution. And the residents of Tuxbury are subsidizing the operations of the state. And I've said that here so many times. I've said at this table so many times that we need to be on a pilot program, and the state has to do that. I'm not interested in incremental special legislation that gets us to minimus funding. I'm interested in a lot more money, and I'm interested in being on that pilot program, and I'm interested in that pilot program being updated to represent current valuations. Mr. Ryder said it very well. I would be more confident if it were a prison. I don't want it to be a prison. This hospital serves an incredibly important role in our community and for the Commonwealth. We have a lot of people in Massachusetts, just like the rest of the country, that are suffering for mental health services, and I believe in the mission of this hospital. It's important. I know that they have locked units, I know that they do a good job with many pieces of it, and it's not an indictment of the whole system or the leadership, and certainly not the staff. It's a function of, simple mistakes continually seem to be made, and there can be no single point of failure when it comes to an individual who needs the treatment and the help of this facility walking away. We have had incidents where, in the past, individual was absent without leave, stole a car, crashed into things, and caused property damage in town, and that included damage to a resident's vehicle. It could be, it could be so much worse. Our residents have a right to feel safe in their homes and feel confident and proud of that state hospital. You know, a few years ago, they were filming movies there, or TV show there, and that was kind of a neat thing to see, and it was put in the newspapers, and you could watch the shows on TV, and that was pretty cool as a historical property in the community. It's interesting, the Public Health Museum is a fantastic resource for the Commonwealth and for understanding public health. So I believe in the mission, I believe in the work, but I have a real problem with confidence that this is going to be adequately addressed. And I don't know how to, no matter what we say here, seems to make no difference. You know, it doesn't matter how many times we say the same damn thing, it continues. So, you know, maybe a protest, maybe the residents protest on State Common, maybe that'll get Governor Healey's attention. Maybe, you know, people being really angry in public will do that. I don't want to do that, but it doesn't seem to matter, no matter what we're saying here, doesn't seem to make a difference. So we have people in this community who are committed to this hospital, doing good work, and I am committed to this hospital doing good work and being successful. I want it to be successful. But in order for it to be successful, it has to be safe. And these continued walkaways are unsafe, and there is no middle ground there. So, you know, I look forward to a tour. I don't know what's going to happen. I have little confidence that the Commonwealth is going to come through with any meaningful funding. I don't know what we're supposed to do to get that, other than continue to yell. We can demand more action from our legislators. I continually say the pilot program needs to be brought up, and there's been exactly zero effort to make that happen. I know members of our trustees have also approached that and tried to make that happen, and that has not been brought forward. I have said in the past, I've brought this to issue, and I have been told, well, we're lucky it's still open because the state might close. And then that was said by Representative Robertson to me on more than one occasion. And it was also something that his pred, yes, you did, yes, you did. Don't, I've said it to you so many times, David, don't. No, I'm not having a conversation. It's my time now. This is my time. So this is, it's constantly, you know, threatened, maybe it'll be closed. And that was something, that was a narrative that happened in the past, and that has been said by previous representatives. I've been doing business in this town for a long time, and I am over this being not addressed appropriately by the state. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to echo everyone's sentiment so far. I share those concerns. There is clearly 100% a safety issue up there. It's not an issue, as Mr. Ryder said, it's not what's going to happen, it's when something will go wrong. But I also want to, Ms. Wellman made a very good point, and this is something I try to, whenever a resident brings this up to me, I say, make sure you're calling our delegation, call the governor, because this is a state issue. The DPH is doing great, they're doing great work at the state hospital. It's been there since 1866, maybe earlier, and there's a lot of good programs that are there.
Yes.
There is, I believe the forensic assessment program is what is causing issues. Fully understood, they need to be funded, they need to be staffed, they need to have the funding to be able to get those $1,500 radios. I don't blame the state hospital for all of it. Yes, there is training that can occur, yes, they can make sure that they're pushing their own, but our delegation, our legislature, the governor need to lean in and support and make sure they have the funding required. A lot of these issues are easily fixed with appropriate funding, fences, cameras, man traps, appropriate staffing. These are not new innovative solutions. These are tried and true security practices that would resolve a lot of these issues. So I do just want to, while I share the disdain for what's currently going on, I do want to make sure we're not pointing at the state hospital as a whole and taking away from all the other good work that's happening there. I think a lot of the policy issues that they've started to work on, which I think most of the actions they've taken since the assessment, are a good step. I agree, it's moving a little slow. I will say, in the state hospital's defense, when we had them in here in July, they said that the assessment will be wrapping up in the fall, and it sounds like they're on track to have that meeting they promised with us in the end of the year. So they, again, I would like to have seen more happen, but it sounds like they are keeping up with their commitment to us from the last time they were in here. Again, I would like to see more, and I would like to see a lot more from the state, but my disdain is not targeted at the state hospital. Again, I think we've come full circle from 1866, because I believe it was initially opened, and people out there and residents will fact-check me on this, but I believe it was initially opened for, as an insane asylum. I believe that was one of the driving factors.
Alms House.
The Pauper asylum or something like that.
Alms House.
What was that?
Alms.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, we've now come worse than full circle to having this, this one part of one program that is there. I guess I don't know what else to say. Like, funding, it's funding. Nobody's happy about what's happening, it's a safety concern, something bad will occur. I think we need to lean in and work, continue to work with the state hospital, because again, I don't hold them at fault for the majority of these issues because they don't have funding. We know how hard it is firsthand to get money from the state for things.
Oh, God.
Like, it's literally an act of Congress. So I often have to check my anger and the anger of residents that I speak to about that fact, is we have to make sure we're channeling that energy in the right direction and not blaming the hospital itself. They don't have funding to get resourcing, to get cameras, man traps, fences, all these simple things. So I would say, if people are out there that are angry, and I know they are, they should be talking to their delegation, and they should be calling the governor's office, they should be writing letters, they should be pushing, because if our governor is not doing what we think they should be doing, and our legislature is not doing what we think they should be doing, that's who we need to go after. The hospital itself can't really do much. They are very limited in funding, and since they have the consolidation programs, they have a bunch of little pots of money, and it is very difficult to kind of cross-spend from those pots. I do want to give Dave Robertson a shout-out for actually being here. As was mentioned, only member of our delegation that actually made the time to be here for what is clearly a very serious matter. But now, I'm going to ask you to go back and actually start some fires and help us get some funding for this, to resolve this issue. Thank you.
Mr. Graban?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Mr. Montori said, I'm furious. I'm not sugarcoating. I'm so angry. This security plan they put together is a joke. It's a joke. They, they're giving us papers, they're giving us, this is what we could do if we had money. There's no money. So they, it's almost like they're putting us off, it's like, you know, here's something we hired a head of security. I sat at the table, they gave us one hour to meet with them, they had all the suits there, and for 50 minutes, they wanted to watch, have me watch a PowerPoint presentation, and then, you know, go through all the things that they want to talk about, and then, oh, I got to go, hurry up, and you don't get to ask any questions. I cut them off immediately. I was like, I'm sick and tired of this. To Mr. Robinson's credit, he was there, he helped put that meeting together, he was just as angry as I was. So David and I have not always agreed. I make it very clear. But I do commend him for coming there and actually raising his voice and being upset. So I saw the passion in his voice that I had about what's going on. And I just, like I said, one thing's to have that, you, I mean, I want a letter from this board going to the governor's office stating how disgusted we are with what's going on. We are not in the business of funding state hospitals. You are putting our residents' lives at risk. Even if, you can take a look at that program or whatever, the security plan they put in place. I ripped it apart in front of them. The first thing I said is, okay, you're talking about badges and all these different things and hotels, I mean, going through the place and security doors and locking doors, and that's for the hospital. They have all kinds of programs that are all around there. Zero security. Court-ordered people going to other locations up there that are not in the hospital, they're in the other buildings. And yes, the only time we find out that they have dangerous criminal offenses or things is when they commit another crime and they get arrested by us, and then all of a sudden we hear about it. And our police isn't aware of it, our fire department's not aware of it, our ambulance, who we're sending up there, we're putting them in harm's way, sending them to a location that we have no idea of what's going on. They cannot give you the information of what's going on. They're constantly walking, so even if they implemented everything that they're talking about, yes, everyone's life still is at risk. There's no ifs, ands, or buts. And I made it very clear, we're going to be sitting here eventually, somebody's going to get attacked, somebody's going to get stabbed, somebody's going to get that, and then all we'll have will Fox 25, Channel 7, they'll all be here, and then all of a sudden, woo, we're going to take action. We have to wait for that to happen because they won't give the money that's needed. It's ridiculous. They're putting your lives at risk, and they don't care. They'll go and they'll go through their routine, they'll give us a plan, the plan isn't even close to what we need. And when I asked, okay, here's your plan of what you're talking about, do you have the money to implement any of this? The answer was, no. The answer was, we're going to, the budget for next year is going to be tight, and we, you know, it's always difficult to get funding. So I understand where they're at. They only get so much money, and they have to provide programs and services and what else, but they're being inundated with people up there, and so the place is being filled to capacity, and they're using the money for what the patients need. I understand that. They're giving the patients as much as they possibly can, but in the meantime, our lives are being put at risk, and it's just a matter of time before it happens. We can go up there, we can go walk around, they can show us the whole thing again, look, I got a security guard with a badge. All right, but what about those places over there? All those people that are walking in and out of the place, are any of them, does anybody know if they have warrants, does anybody know if they have dangerous, they're court-ordered to be here, to go to these programs. Anybody know anything? No. So they're, even if they put everything in place, that doesn't change. Security cameras going around the place, talked about that. Now, to their point, to their credit, they have been better with communications. They have been coming, talking with our police and fire because we're forcing them to do so. I mean, we're hearing more and more about this because we're communicating with them better. But they're letting people out of the, out of the locations. I mean, I've had purvey to look at some of the reports of the people that have been out there, and it's public record, so anybody can go and ask for copies of the reports that have been out there. They're dangerous people that have been released and walking around the place. And the fact that they allow people to be walking the grounds, walking off the place, we are sending our children to the place that we say is safe to send them. I can't do that. I've received so many calls from seniors telling me that they're afraid to go to the cemetery, because when they go to the cemetery, they're trying to break into their cars or steal things out of their cars. The people are afraid, it's this time of year, it's beautiful along where the leaves are and where they're walking the trails. They won't walk there. They're afraid who they're going to run into. I don't blame them. You never know who's going to be down there. And it's, they're walking all over our town, nobody's paying track to them. Even when somebody escapes and they ask, who was the person with them? They couldn't even figure it out because somebody's a part-time employee, somebody's this. They have no record of who was even with people. It's so scary of what's happening, and it's just going to get worse and worse. And we can go up there, we can talk with them, but unless there's something that says they're going to put real funding to keep the residents safe, your lives are at risk, and nothing's changing. They're just, we're just going to sit here, they're going to, yeah, we're going to try. We hired a head of security. I asked the head of security, do you need me more resources? Yes, I do. Do you have money for that? No. That's where we're at. I mean, I know our police is trying to work with them, I know our fire's trying to work with them, but, you know, they'll come and say, listen, you know, they've been so cooperative with us, they've been so, things like that. But then as soon as it gets, somebody's off, the police chief's furious, the fire chief is upset. I mean, I wouldn't feel comfortable if I was in, sending my ambulances up there with my workers, going there knowing that I'm putting their lives at risk, and they don't know what they're walking into. And when we send ambulances up there, they escape from the ambulance, and then when we complain to them about people running off the grounds, they say, oh, those weren't in the hospital, those were in the other programs. And I asked, well, who's in charge of securing the other programs? We are. Are you doing it? No. So, like I said, I'll give Representative Robinson credit for coming up there. He was speaking his voice, he asked, he put like a plan together, he submitted all these things, they've done none of the things that he requested so far. And I asked for, they're supposedly putting a budget together in November, and I said, I want to see the budget that you're requesting, because here's all the things you say you need to do. Are you actually going to request that funding from the state? I'd like to see it. Are you asking for additional money that will actually fund this? And then I go, well, you know, it is tight budgets. I don't want to see a piece of paper that says we're going to, this is what we should do. do, but we're not going to do it because we don't have the money. And that's the way I walked away from it. I feel unsafe, I'm worried about our residents and it's not getting any better. So without us calling the governor's office, our delegation up there fighting for us as well, something bad's going to happen and I don't know what to tell you. It's, it's scary. That's all again, Mr. Chairman, I'm just.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Krabman. I'm not going to add to any more of the anger in the room because I'm upset as well and my solution to this thing is to shut the whole place down and just send them away. But unfortunately, we can't do that. The state, the governor does not care about Tewksbury. They care about the cities, where they get their votes from or whatever. I have a feeling that the state doesn't even care about their employees that work there. Those people are getting attacked, the nurses. So again, I don't want to go off on a tangent like some people do. But I agree.
I was actually calm.
I, I agree with them wholeheartedly that something has to be done and I would like to take a tour of it and I would like to speak to the administrator and if Mr., Mr. Robertson, if you can get the governor here, it would be greatly appreciated. You know, I mean it, I'm serious. I mean, if, we have to get the lieutenant governor.
He'll be opening another shelter.
I think we have.
It's not the priority.
We'd have a better chance of getting her down.
Exactly. It's not the priority of this agenda.
So with that said, Mr. Chairman, before we end, I would like to ask the town manager to draft a letter from this board to the governor's office saying that we demand better security at that hospital, that you're putting our residents at risk and I want an answer of the governor's office, what they're going to do to make our residents feel safe and why are we subsidizing a state hospital?
I'll second that.
I agree with that.
Mr. Chair, I know some residents are here today. I hope you allow them. They sat here for a very long period of time, listening to us rumble and rant and I'd like to be able to hear anyone that has something to say.
Okay, we'll give everybody a couple minutes.
Anyone?
What's that?
We open public.
I'm the speaker. But my name is Beth Perez. I'm a resident, I have no children, I live on Catamount Road and I felt very unsafe putting my children to bed the other night, not knowing if I was going to send them to school with somebody who's escaped the hospital, that we don't know who it is, you know, what they've done, that kind of thing. I'm also a clinician myself, I work in mental health, I acknowledge, you know, there's a need for the hospital, but I, I don't understand what the disconnect is that weekly somebody is getting out of the hospital. So I just hope, um, I agree, a letter or something to, to bring this to attention. Maybe the news needs to be more aware of what's going on because all the patients have rights and they need treatment. We have rights to feel safe as a community and to feel, feel safe sending our kids to that park or to Little League or to school. I just wanted to share that and I feel like this is a really big issue that needs to be addressed. Again, I support the hospital and the work they do, but it needs to be done in a way that's safe for everybody.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Not seeing anyone else. Mr. Robinson, while you're here, we might as well listen to you for five minutes.
I want to clarify that first. I'm sorry, I, the way it was presented, I feel like wasn't genuine. I would never ever support a business or publicly backed thing that would put residents at risk for the sake of quote, jobs. Never. And in fact, quite frustrating, we brought up to the governor, um, back when the town was negotiating out with the state hospital about the water rates, the lack of payment, the money that we were losing because they kept replying, it's an economic boom. And I said, well, how many nurses live north of Nashua now? Because the salary and act can't pay. So I just want to make it very clear for everyone at home, I will never tell anyone in the community or the board to suffer for the sake of having fewer and fewer jobs there.
I appreciate the clarification, thank you.
And I apologize for getting a little frustrated by that. I, I don't know if it was a miscommunication, but. So to move on, one of the things, as I was listening to you and the board and with Mr. Krabman at the meeting yesterday that I organized there with EOHHS, DPH and DMH, is funding, 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 particularly in the coming looking years and that they haven't been funded now. I'm just going to come out and say, that's not true in the FY25 budget, not the current one now. In fact, back in November 23, following one of the previous escapee attempts, the entire delegation sat down with the governor. Now, it's no secret, I do not share a lot of policies with her, but she heard us out and that meeting had two goals within it. Increasing the amount of funding and presenting her with what we felt was an action list of immediate, solvable things that were contributing to the A-ways at campus. And for the folks at home, those are the folks that are leaving campus without doing so. The budget, the line item specifically, oh, one, uh, I think it's oh, one nine five within it, was $194 million for Tewksbury, Pappus and Shattuck, which they also shared some security concerns around that time. We as a delegation, not wanting to isolate those who also share some of the same pains in their communities, asked her to increase the entire line item for all three hospitals. Tewksbury had a disproportionate amount, but meeting with the governor, she took the list that I accumulated, including ideas from you and your predecessors, as well as folks in the community, myself, Barry Feingold, my other representative colleagues, and presented that to her as well. This year, the line item was increased to $217 million. And at that time, she took my list and to her credit, again, I don't get along with the governor particularly well on a number of issues, but she did start immediately working on some, placed others within the security review and that some of the stuff that I'm going to touch upon as I feel is the permanent solution to this all, is in a longer-term outlook because the fundamental issue at the end of the day is the age of the Saunders building, the lack of space and the patients being transported outside or through less than secure areas than when they're supposed to be. That is the crux of the problem. It was exacerbated because in 2018, now, excuse me, maybe it was 2019, I forget which year Governor Baker offered some of the early buyouts for early retirement in order to balance the state budget. Shortly thereafter, COVID hit and DMH, uh, DPH and DMH, the security, the other staff unpresent, had a loss in their ranks and a downsizing, so there was less eyes and more opportunities for issues. The frustrating part, since we have met, and this is by no means blaming anyone or anything, we presented that delegate letter to the governor. And if you look through on some of it, a number of the items which have occurred are there. I agree, they're behind schedule. Some of the things like the radio, I know you mentioned specifically, after speaking with Jason, the security director, he's on it, he's just looking at it as a technical thing. I guess they want to see if they can make sure they incorporate the state police through a digital trunk or such. I agree, it's frustrating process, but there are many aspects they're working on because the funding that we got there. Going forward though, like I said, the real crux of the matter is, is that the Saunders building is, is a dinosaur in a sense. It was built decades ago for a more kind of bump style, open floor, mental health. That is not what the best practice with mental health is today. We have moved on since. And then with the combination with the rise in forensic patients, that is no longer sufficient as well. So what happened was, after we met in November 23, we had follow-ups and a promise from the governor, the executive office of health and human safety, department of public health and department of mental health, to begin having regular meetings with our town officials being either Mr. Montori, Mr. Sadwick and our respective chiefs. We actually typed up a follow-up letter demanding the governor to ensure that she continued doing stuff. The difference is, is after speaking with the town and municipality, we saw from our chiefs that things maybe haven't been solved yet, but there was actual progress being made. Doesn't mean that we stopped, we just shifted because the other two big concerns that I have at the hospital, as I touched on with COVID, is the shortfall in staffing. And you can talk with the SEIU and the MNA and all that, but I stood in the picket line with them, I asked the governor to meet their contract bargaining unit, I asked him to increase the rate of pay there because they are relying on temporary nurses and that's a penny wise, pound foolish problem that at the end of the day comes to the low pay and the terrible working conditions. That was a more long-term thing because again, many of the things that we were asked by, either you, residents in the town or our chief, were getting reported progress from our chiefs during the meeting as well as confirmation from the state. So rather than jam my fingers in the process that was ongoing, I just began to look at the issues with staffing. The second thing is, and I apologize for sounding like a broken record, but until that building is physically changed, these issues will not stop. And I know I've had conversations with a number of you on things, the differences between man traps, the badge IDs, et cetera. And I can go down this list and mention, going back to certain things that you've mentioned to me, which a delegation brought to the governor, which are present in the plan. So I understand the frustration, we all want more, myself included, especially because with all due respect, when I was getting anonymous emails from the campus employees on them removing a gas-powered police car and going to all-electric, to their hands-off approach policy, to changing the uniforms, I was the one on the phone with Chris Harding and EOHHS and DPH saying, you gotta be out of your goddamn minds going to a more civilian style police force. I was a UMass student, you had more rigorously trained officers following me around. And this has happened for the last year and a half. I've been going back and forth with some of these anonymous accounts about minute and major policy changes there and I've fought and pushed back. So again, pardon me for being a little frustrated here because the last year and a half or so, I've been fighting these battles over and over and over against the administration. Even going far back as Governor Baker, when he started just knocking off for some of our local appointees and placing some people that he was friendly towards on there. Now, he and that case had 100% of the right to appoint whoever he want, wanted. He didn't listen to me. A little frustrating, but at the end of the day, that's the governor's entire power in and of itself. But I think his changes back then, which also included a boost in the nonprofits on campus, and then combined with the early layoffs, plus COVID and then these building issues, are the major contributors to why the A-ways had a spike in the last month or so. But to give you a little comparison, I know Mr. Ryder cited correctly that they had seven in the last couple of months. I believe we're up to eight this year, no, nine this year, 11 last year, and actually in the moment, if you'd like, I can tell you exactly from what I confirmed through my union contacts, what their self-reported assault rates are for 2023 and this year and 2022 as well. It's still an extraordinarily high amount, but it's come down year over year. And that's why again, particularly now with this recent bump up, it's frustrating because we have had a downward trend. But again, at the end of the day, the only thing that's going to permanently fix this is a new building. That is not something that we do in an annual budget for operations. That comes from a special capital bond bill. And I've already asked Ways and Means about the most appropriate vehicle for that and what the timeframe is that I have to work with the hospital to propose, get the engineering study funded and get a secondary wing similar to, I believe Mr. Mackey used the term like a surgical suite wing that you'd find in a traditional hospital that we would go to with a secondary access with inside. We've tried to circumnavigate this because it's going to be several tens of millions of dollars most likely, depending on how many wings, how deep the renovation goes and what the capacity is. But due to the age of the Saunders buildings, infrastructure in certain parts such as compressed air for breathing assistance, thicker electrical cables to carry breathing machines and such like that, the floor plan's pretty much locked. So that building is the linchpin in all of this. So again, I apologize to the board for getting frustrated in the back, you know, you want to respond right then and there as we do, but the funding thing, we've already been working on since last year. And as well, I, I agree with the pilot program. I absolutely certainly do. And it, it hasn't not been attempted, it's just come up empty. Hence is why in the past, the members on the board that have served for a while, remember, for our hospital reimbursements to our police and fire departments for their respective calls, used to go year over year, town manager would call me, we'd put it in a file. We changed that. It's now part of the hospital's operating budget year over year and we're holding the governor's feet to the fire on this. It was a very unique way and I will give Senator Feingold credit for this because he, with his, his legal expertise, did come up with this alternative. And it's such a specific thing that more or less right now, I feel like a full signal some public record in case any of my colleagues with their hospitals hear it, but essentially that money is pigeonholed just for Tewksbury. And it's $500,000, which you, the town officials, get to decide how the chiefs apply for reimbursement in between. So you're no longer calling us on the delegation to ask for a specific amount of money, praying and hoping, reading tea leaves and all that. That is now within the line operations for the DPH, excuse me, the line item of the budget for DPS operations for Tewksbury Hospital. And you have the ones, are the ones with the power to talk amongst yourself and the town manager and the chiefs to discuss who's taking the line shares of the road, of the load or how the reimbursement functions. So it's not that we're giving up on pilot and we're not jingling dad's car keys while we distract you with something else. It was just that our worry was if we were going to continuously push for the pilot program, it's going to be a decade later potentially. And I did not want to wait year, I'm sorry, it was exaggeration, but I don't want year over year, over year, over year. In the meantime, we wanted to ensure that our first responders were continuously being reimbursed for that. So that's hence the kind of funny footwork on that motion. But I know, and you've been a champion for it many years, it's, it's not something that we have given up. It's just an extraordinarily hard thing that has been fruitless across two different political parties' governors so far and two combative DPH administrations. That's all. So.
Mr. Robinson, before you continue, I just want to clarify, Mr. Chair, you're, you're talking about the Saunders building. I understand that. And, and that report talks about the Saunders building.
Yes, sir.
But I was up there, you were up there.
Right with you.
Are all the inmates in the, are all the dangerous people in the Saunders building? No, they're, they're in the other buildings that are around there, that are out there that we have no idea who they are. So even if we did, all the security would stake everything on that program and you talked about the Saunders.
Correct.
That's, that, they're not talking about all the other court ordered people that are on the other buildings, there's zero security there.
Correct.
So that, I, I, I'm listening to, yes, that will help, but that is still not going to make us safe. So when you're talking about that, I, like I said, there's zero thing in that report that says anything about security for those other buildings, they're like, they're discounting it. And that's my concern is that they're putting these together and they're telling us, by doing this, they're going to, it's not even close and they're, they're ignoring it.
I apologize, maybe I should have leaned off. The Saunders is just one of, kind of, I would say, three or four categories I, kind of for the sake of you all in the public put in. So the Saunders building does tie into that in the extent in that I would like to see any renovation or expansion, consolidate those programs. On occasion, patients and not the most dangerous folks at all, but some of the folks that will try or had tried to walk away would be walked between different programs. And I think an elimination of that and a consolidation into a larger Saunders building is there. As for the nonprofits, you were at that meeting as well and I appreciate you being there. Speaking of DPH, DMH there, one of the things that I ask for them is to come up with a universal policy. So as the contracts and agreements with the state hospital for these programs come up and renew, new clauses would be added. Now, that's a bit difficult, not because of the dangerousness of folks in that, but simply because proposing a policy that sounds broadly appealing to the public, like saying nobody with a violent history could, could attend such a thing, sounds reasonable. But we have, for example, I had a gentleman older than I am, he had one previous arrest back in college that called our office and he wanted to go and turn over a new leaf, overcome his addiction struggles. So it's ensuring a way that we refuse and, and push back against those like the gentleman that was picked up on East Street while also understanding and observing that these folks that might have done something 15, 20 years ago are not going to be isolated out of the program itself. Also, a lot of these folks there are also there voluntarily, they're not directed by a court 100% of the time at these nonprofits.
Sure.
Even vast majority at, uh, DPH is, is not along that line. So the policy that I need to propose, I need to make sure isn't challenged by previous case law or constitutionality around saying, if you go into a program voluntarily and then want to leave, as the administration was suggesting that occurred Sunday, we can't restrict a person that was there voluntarily as an American to say, no, thank you, I no longer want your services and leave on a public way. That's just not allowed. If they're there because they went through a court process or were, that's another thing. And I think again, that could solve back with taking the C4 unit and addressing the concerns around the infrastructure that allows such things to go. I mean, with all due respect, one of the things I disagree on, well, I agree with you that it could be better, but one of the things that I felt better about having seen at least a step in is very far from done. But one of the asks that I had when we went into the governor's office and it was raised by a number of folks on the select board in the town, was the three entrances across the hospital there. And they haven't since shuttered one, and the other two, they are upgrading. Now, they still have the metal detectors we asked for. They still have a number of the other things that we asked for. But when, and I agree, that was a short meeting, but I just want to say, I hope that's our first meeting with them, and that's all my intention was. At follow-up meetings, to continue pressuring Jason and the other security staff to follow through with that stuff. And again, they have miles and miles to go on many things, but that said, firsthand, there are active construction projects and other things going on at this moment, and I'm not absolving them of the A-Ways. I'm just adding context of where we are and where we need to go. So coming up for the FY '26, '27 budgets, I want to hold at that $214 million, plus accounting for inflation, if not even higher. I plan to ask the delegation, again, to meet with Governor Healy. I feel like that bump, even though it was for all three hospitals, covered the one topic across three campuses, and that return of, what was it, near $20-some-odd million, is allowing them to do things like get the police car that I asked them to, so the one that's not just hung up on charging, or getting a Polaris off-road vehicle, because, as I pointed out to them, if you're driving an electric car through a field and a rock hits the bottom, the car goes up in flames. They have that. They might be slow, they're still making a ton of errors. And I want to use adjectives that are not appropriate in the public meeting for some of the things, but they are making grounds and they are breaking ground on other things which we have directly asked, both as a delegation and through you and the community at large for. So, again, I'm not excusing their performance, but I'm saying that we have a great fiscal foundation start. They jumped on the easy stuff because it was immediately available, things like the ID badges in and out of the doors, now with two sets, the excess cameras, they installed 30-something cameras over the last few months, in addition to what they installed in the previous years. They're occurring. Again, the real issues are getting our manpower back to where it was before, and they are making grounds. I think they have 40-something openings now, and they're trying to get down to 20 by the end of the year. Compare that to almost-
They have 40 openings?
Yes.
Forty?
Four is zero, but that is for the entire, the DPH, DMH side. That's a lot of, a lot of folks.
That's not just security, that's nurses?
Correct. I'm sorry for stating, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
That's correct. I apologize. That's things like your stewards that help clean and wash, nurses and the like. It's actually probably be more than 40 if you include some of the incident.
Well, I don't think we have to go through all of that.
Correct.
We're lacking funding. How about less patients? How many patients are in this hospital?
Uh, right.
That are under court order?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Until this facility, the Saunders building that you're talking about, and I know that is just one, until the Saunders building is able to accept a patient safely, no longer send anyone there. That's a very simple process.
Yep.
Until you can safely, safely provide treatment safely, no longer send somebody there. That comes down to you and the other delegation telling the governor, we cannot send anyone else there because it's unsafe. This is on her if something happens. It is not a priority of her administration. And I, again, thank you for everything you're doing. Last year, we saw a $365 million budget cut. How much was cut out of your budget? I'd like to know how much out of the $365 million that was cut out of the state budget last year came out of that line item.
Nothing, you say it was-
So that's, that's what's in there right now. What was in, in still eligible, there was a $365 million budget run across the state, correct?
Correct.
So nothing was cut out of that line item. I find that hard to believe. Everything was cut. Across the state, everything was cut.
Sure.
So, again, no one else can go to that facility if they're between, if they have a criminal background. Nobody else can go there, court-ordered, until that facility is safe.
I would have to have half the power of Congress in the state legislature, because part of, part of what was ordered back in 2018, under the Trump administration, Congress had a bipartisan law they passed, as well as, I think it was January, or maybe February 2018, Governor Baker and the legislature had that too. So I don't know if I can put a complete stop to that without us violating the law in and of ourselves there.
Is there another, is there another facility? So if, if Tewksbury doesn't have a bed open, say if there's no beds open, that individual will go to another facility, correct?
Well, it depends on the, so Bridgewater, and then it's called MASIC, I think the Mass Alcohol Substance Abuse Center down in Plymouth?
So, hold on, sorry, sorry to interrupt you. I just want to clarify, because I agree with you, but we need to be talking about the forensic assessment patients, not the, not the-
No, that's exactly what I'm talking, that's exactly what I'm talking about. Sorry, I should have, I should have-
That's the only thing, there's a lot of confusion around.
Right. The forensic patients that are being court-ordered, somebody, the administration needs to get messages to who, the judges, because that's where this is coming from.
Correct.
This facility is not equipped to handle this type of patient. That's not a violation of anyone's rights. That is a violation of the residents of Tewksbury's rights, because you're, a judge is putting individuals at this facility that everyone in this room knows it can't securely handle. So your, our rights are being violated. So until that happens, no longer send any court-ordered individuals through the forensic program. That's a simple process, that until you guys get your, until you get this funding, the buildings, everything you think, after this assessment, and the head of security says, we're able to take these individuals. And I understand they need that treatment, but that needs to be done first. Security first, and then we can provide the treatment, because the workers up there do not feel safe. So if I'm going to work every day and not feeling safe, how productive am I in providing services to that individual? Because I don't know what that, any history about that individual. All I know is this individual is here as a court order for X, Y, or Z treatment. You know nothing about their past, and you're, those individuals, employees, are putting themselves at harm's way. Because we've asked, do you know anything about these individuals? And the answer was, no. We're not told. We do not have that information.
That's right.
That's wrong.
And they can't provide that information because-
Because it's a violation.
Because it's a violation.
That's wrong.
The way I look at it is, he was a prisoner first.
Sure.
A patient second, you know? So I think there's, something has to be done where they can allow the Tewksbury police to know why that person is in there. I understand what the current laws, they can't right now. But again, they were prisoners first, patients second. And the thing is, the funding, like you said, you bought a new police car, you bought, you're trying to get the 18, how about buying a lock? A lock would make perfect sense, you know?
We got that too.
Yeah.
I want to know what you think the process would to be suspending, though, because, again, and this is the tough part, and it's something I haven't been able to touch upon yet, but I planned to when talking with the board, was a litmus test. One of the things I asked the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security was that if it would be constitutionally viable federally and state, or if there's any conflict in case law, that if there was a system, and I don't want folks at home to think it's all like a sex offender, but I said, look, in the case of this, if someone was to attend Tewksbury, can we require them, especially in the nonprofits, to have to report, and then the administration can, in conjunction with the police department, give a kind of overview of who's on campus week to week, or more often, as the chief said. Actually, Ms. Buckley, who was here in the audience, gave the idea for something that she encountered in the world, the Department of Children and Families. So they have an electronic case file software that follows the person, and when I asked the security director at yesterday's meeting, how his progress was going in that system, they are actually going through the bidding process now, he told me. And what the hope is for me here, not to reveal my hand going forward with the executive agency, if any of them watch this, but I want that program between the court system, DMH and DPH, so that's an instantaneously transfer. After that system's in place, I would like the hospital administration to meet with our chief and say, at what level do you want to be notified that if we do have somebody that comes through like this? Because in years past, that allowed our chief to consult you, also the delegation and such, and provide a counterbalance on that aspect. I also want to say, though, too, for a lot of the folks there that are court-affiliated, because this comes up in the media constantly, and the Facebook telephone game just has taken it to another level, court-affiliated is something I'm trying to get all the breakdowns now for you. It could be a Section 12 or a Section 35, which is something that I deal with quite often in the community, that's intent to self-harm or drug use, right? So we need to find and break down how to discriminate with those statistics from month to month as well. Because those folks will appear to come from the criminal justice system, but really was, is a loved one or a family member, or other legal guardian was saying, I believe Dave might be in danger of self-harm, or that he might overdose himself, and just they go there. So as for, for anybody that has been sentenced by a judge that would have to go to a prison such as MCI, or even Barica House of Corrections, they go to Bridgewater. The men go to Bridgewater, most of the women go down to MASIC if they have any sort of substance abuse or mental health issue there. None of those people are present at Tewksbury right now, with the exception of one bed-ridden man who can't get out, because I will not say his medical condition, but he's literally incapable of getting out of bed himself, and it's essentially just a hospice program at this.
Well, the individual that escaped two weeks ago was a sexual predator.
Correct.
And he was there. So right now, he's not, he's there at Bridgewater now, after being arrested.
Correct.
But to say that that not happening, then why did that individual go there?
I should have clarified, I was referring to the DPH, DMH folks. For the non-affiliated programs that are in campus, like I said before, they have contracts back over the years, which I've asked them now to put in that clause to prevent any of that. That gentleman that you're referring to was the one, I believe, that was over at Lowell House, correct? Or one was Lowell House and the other was next door. But no, it's of concern, and that's an aspect. It's more unique in the fact that, again, because they had that contract, now I need to ensure that the policy survives anywhere from the 20 to 30-plus programs that have had been flowed over the years. And that is not thrown back because of inconsistencies, applications.
David, I got one quick thing. I just thought, when you, I've been up to State House a million times. When you go up to State House, you hear Capitol Police there, with security guards. Can anybody walk in and out of the State House?
Yes, and they're unarmed, actually.
Do you have to go through security? Do you have to go through things?
You go through-
Because the governor feels unsafe with people coming in and out.
Actually, you know-
So here we have, and we have a state facility. Why can, we're talking about these prisons that have been closed recently, and you've got all these prison guards that are around there. Why can they not put a gate around the whole facility and have check-in and checkout with this actual police, either Capitol Police, correctional police, or somebody at these gates? So somebody coming in on grounds, I'm here because I'm not court-ordered, or whatever it is, but I'm going to this program, and I'm going through this, you check in, you check out, you have that. Somebody walks out of there and tries to, you should have fenced around the whole project, and you should have gated things with real police and real security. And if anybody comes in, they can go in and out the doors, check in, you give your ID, you say, I'm going to this program, or whatever it is. But when the ambulances are coming in and somebody jumps out of the ambulance, they're not going to be able to run out the gate, because there'll be a police officer there. That's something that could be done. Fence the area around, put real police around the whole project, and then, when somebody's up there, they're going to be like, maybe I better behave myself, because there's real police officers there.
I think yesterday, I was, that was, I was the first one to talk in the meeting, after Ryan McCowen there with DPH, and what's his name next to him said, well, we're going toward more of a public safety department. I think, right, you remember, as that was-
We don't need rent-a-cars. We need real police up there.
Correct.
Somebody that has the authority to oversee, and somebody that has, when somebody walks in, they see somebody who's a real, that is trained, that sees the problems, not somebody that's like, oh, somebody ran off the property, and let me find out who I'm supposed to call.
Right.
These security things are not trained in any way, shape, or form to do the job. And we need real, and we're sending people there, then it's dangerous. You have the State House covered, and with all kinds of Capitol Police, and you can't go in and out without going through security. Why should somebody that's court-ordered inmates be able to walk around another state facility without any security?
The Capitol Hill Police are no longer at the State House. We only have unarmed DCR Rangers. All they can do is give you a court summons.
You should cancel.
Actually, Suffolk Police, who are also unarmed, are our first responders, and then Boston City Police at large.
You don't have state police or things at the State House?
The governor has a mobile unit. The reason is, and this was actually something that I went back and researched to see if we could apply to the hospital, it has something to do with the union, and them being on the road in barracks and the patrols, and that was a political fight that she had to have with her mobile unit there. The only police officer, the only state police officer that I see is if some executive is in, and on occasion, when there's a verified threat. They've had some more man posts just because of political tension more recently, but that was not a regular thing. But it is something that I actually looked at borrowing and trying to apply here.
On this particular topic.
We're going to have you be the last one to make the statement, because we're going to move along.
Okay. Two things. I believe it was our police department a number of years ago that requested that they're involved in these calls, because we weren't being notified in the past, because it was the state police. So we need to be careful about what we ask for, because the communication, my understanding, has improved, but we certainly can't provide the level of security that's needed. But then, secondarily, my understanding is a most recent individual who walked away, walked away on a cigarette break, because it was a temporary staff member who didn't secure that individual. So I don't care how many radios we have, and how many fences are up, or how many people are there, if you have a single point of failure where somebody can just walk away on a cigarette break. You know what I mean? So I appreciate all of the detail you have brought to this conversation tonight, and the work that you continue to do. There's more work to be done, and we need to be as out-of-the-box thinking as we can be, but our residents share our frustration, we share theirs, you share it too, I see that. I know other members of the delegation, I don't know if they knew this was a topic of conversation tonight, so in fairness to them for not being here, I don't know what they know, and I'm not going to, I've had conversations with the members of the delegation. So, you know, I understand that people are trying, but it's going to have to get elevated significantly. We need to not have simple mistakes happen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Robinson. You have your action items, going to work on. Governor, Lieutenant Governor, get somebody here.
I've been going since, what, 18 months ago with the action items, so I'll request your office to be present.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Didn't have to have this discussion again. Mr. Montori, can you let us know when you're making arrangements for that state hospital visit?
So, probably next Tuesday.
That's fine.
Whatever the pleasure of the board is, I'll see if I can make that work.
On Wednesday?
Wednesdays work.
What's Wednesday work for you?
Sure.
Mondays are just tough.
I'd love to do a tour, but I'd like to know what we're going to see. You know, I mean, it's like, I want to go up there.
Mark, you went yesterday, but none of the rest of us were invited.
Oh, no, but it's like, the whole thing is, are they going to bring us around to like the hall grounds, or are we just going into where they have security? I'd like to see the facility.
I don't know that we can see any places, whether there are active patients in there, but you know.
No, I'm talking about the outdoor programs.
Sure.
Have zero security.
Yeah.
Was that Tuesday, Wednesday? How about Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday's Wednesday, 5:30?
Actually, did we move the-
No, that was-
Economic Development to the 30th, huh? Still don't know.
It's still, yeah, November.
Did we move the school long-range planning to the 30th?
I'd have to look. I'm just going to have to look. I'd have to go to the calendar.
All right.
Tuesday would be it.
We'll get a consensus, Tuesday or Wednesday?
I can do the 29th.
I think we have Tuesdays on, it's either Wednesday, Monday, Thursday. I think we have Tuesdays on, it's either Wednesday, Monday, Thursday.
Thursdays, Halloween.
Thursday.
Friday's the first. Yeah, I'm not doing anything on Halloween. It's kind of a good day to go.
So we're going to do Wednesday?
You said Thursday.
Well, let's schedule it for Wednesday, and if somebody has an issue, we can see if we can change it.
5:30?
5:30 is fine with me.
Except before your meeting.
Yeah. We're up to board member reports. We'll start off with Mr. Kratman.